All right, it's seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. First up, we're gonna recognize our top five seniors who did senior projects. I don't know the order of these, so we're just gonna go by the order that they were handed to me. First one is Benjamin Clarkson. I don't think Taylor Reese is here, but she was one of the top five. Benjamin Ivans. Martin Leia. And Justin Chaney. I want to congratulate all of them, I know that was a lot of hard work and a lot of time put in, and I suppose you all did a wonderful job. In fact, we're gonna get to see Ben Ivans present to us right now, I believe. So Ben, take your way.
Sorry, my frustration this evening was a little rushed, I'm actually on break from work right now. But, uh, my project was over the cost of consumerism. So, imagine this. You're coming home from work, like I will be in a couple hours, at about 9:30, you're going about 65 mile an hour down the four lane, and something catches your eye down on your dash. What you see is the dreaded old orange check engine light. So, at this point, you're faced with the question of, should you pull over? Should you limp at home? Should you just go full speed and keep on going? Or should you go ahead and call that tow truck now? I'm Ben Ivans, and I'm here to talk to you about the cost of consumerism. In this instance specifically, I was faced with a check engine light. And my decision was to avoid the cost of consumerism and save monetary value, which was money. And I bought a $40 code reader, which told me that I needed an $11 fuel filter. Instead of paying about 200 bucks to have some shop diagnose it and replace an $11 oil filter for $60 or $70, I paid $40 plus $11 for the filter and did it myself. There are many ways in which consumerism costs us as people in everyday community. One of which is the right to repair. Every day, as more and more people pay for convenience and just to have a shop do it rather than spend their own time and hard work, companies chip away and make it more expensive for you to do it yourself, or try and completely blockade you from doing it yourself. Instances of this include John Deere and Apple. Apple has had certain times where they've implemented specific screws or software that blocks you from repairing it yourself. Specifically, their biggest failure being the battery, in which when you replace the battery, you have to take the phone to an Apple store and they replace the phone completely at your cost. Uh, John Deere also does this. There was a case in Nebraska where a farmer named Guy Johnson was charged $3,500 for them to reach his tractor three days later than he needed for a crop harvest, just to tell him that he had water in the diesel exhaust fluid tank. A matter that could be solved simply by draining the tank and refilling it with diesel exhaust fluid. Cost him $3,500 and three days' worth of crop harvesting. Companies do this so that they can make more money, and it's simple extortion, in my opinion. And I believe that it should be stopped, and it will be stopped whenever people quit paying for convenience and do it themselves. The way John Deere goes about this is they claim that it's their intellectual property. The tractors that they sell have their own software that they use for GPS location and autonomous running. And they claim that the owner does not really own the tractor, but rather that they lifetime lease it. And this is how they go about charging people insane amounts of money just for simple repairs such as water and the diesel exhaust fluid. Additionally, it saves you monetary value, such as it did in my case. In my case, I paid $40 for a code reader and $11 for a filter instead of paying a crazy amount to have a shop do such a small repair. Simple stuff such as repairing this and changing your own oil and doing general maintenance save you large amounts of money in everyday life, such as it did with my project, in which I built an eight-foot flatbed trailer and saved about $700 to $800. General vehicle maintenance and small products like this are ways that everybody can quit paying and if they will realize the benefits of doing it yourself and the real cost of consumerism in everyday life. Additionally, whenever you do a project yourself, such as changing your own oil or replacing a fuel filter or building your own trailer, you have your own quality control standards that you can set. You can make sure that every bead on this trailer, such as the one I built, is up to your spec and that it won't fall apart going down the road. You can make sure that you tighten the oil filter to your liking and that it will not leak whenever you drive down the road. And simple matters such as this, the fine small details that matter in everyday life, you can assure that you did properly. Furthermore, whenever you do a project yourself, you can go back choosing the method. Here you can see where I'm welding on the trailer. I chose the method of using stick arc welding and using 70-18 rods. This allowed me to have 70,000 PSI of tensile pressure at every joint on this trailer, and is part of why I trust it to go down the road every day. Furthermore, I chose the plans for this trailer, and here you can see them. They're really rather basic, but Miss Amanda Redviello here and her husband were my mentors, and Nicholas helped me and walked me through this building of the trailer plans. And while they were simple, they were structurally rigid. Trailer to roll down the road without problems and support more than 3,500 pounds. Many benefits to doing it yourself include saving money, providing structural advantages, such as both in my case, and it gave me a sense of pride. It let me know that whenever I built it, I had built this trailer, and that I could pull it down the road and I could pull it across this country and know that I built that trailer and I was proud enough to haul it anywhere with anything on it. My product was an eight-foot flatbed trailer with a three-foot by four-foot drop-down gate on the rear end, in which I salvaged the axle and paid for the rest of the parts out of the pot. I used this for hauling stuff such as our John Deere gator, four-wheelers that I often repair, and lawnmowers back and forth from my grandmother's house to our house, as I mow her lawn just about every weekend. I built this trailer completely from scratch using material from Pipes Plus in Pomona, Missouri, which cost me about $365. Here you can see, this is the trailer after I had completed the frame, but before I had laid the floorboards and put the rear ramp on the back. Here you can see my materials list, which I chose. The only things that I did not buy from Pipes Plus were the trailer jack and hitch receiver, which I welded to the frame afterwards. Here you can see what I pulled home from Pipes Plus, and here you can see what I turned it into within a matter of a few weeks with a little bit of elbow grease and a little bit of know-how. Challenges that I ran into in this project were mainly welding, because until I tackled this project, I had not welded since eighth grade year. And every weld that I put down on a piece of sheet metal looked about like a bunch of grapes. I stuck the rod just about every time. By the end of it, I'd be proud to pull up that trailer and show just about everyone in this room. I think they're decent welds and I trust them to go down the road every day. Furthermore, I ran into issues with the planning, because I didn't even know where to start. And I found very quickly that that's a rather easy part of it and that I shouldn't have really been too scared of it. As you can see here, this is my trailer after it had all been completed. Lights are all hooked up and everything. And what this has taught me is it has taught me to encourage everybody else, like every single person in this room. When you see that check engine light in your vehicle, you might already try and do it yourself, because it could be something simple and save you a lot of time and money. Thank you.
Can we ask questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Anybody have any questions at all?
How difficult was that to get a license on after you built it?
It was not difficult at all.
Okay.
All you have to do is you drive it down to a troop G, just outside of town, and they'll look it over, they'll check your welds over, and they'll make sure that it's a proper width for strict legality, and they'll make sure you made it yourself and did not steal it. As long as you don't plan on that, I think you'll be okay.
You did the wiring and shell?
Yes, I did.
How frequently do you use this trailer?
I have used it every Saturday and Sunday so far.
These guys will be happy to answer your questions too, if you have any questions for them.
I wanna buy the code readers, really? They cost $40? Can you buy that at O'Reilly's or where?
I bought one at Walmart, cost me $40, plugs into the OBD2 under the dash.
Really?
I think they've got one at O'Reilly's, it costs you $60, but I went to Walmart.
What can you tell, overall, what do you feel about the senior project? The work that you put in, you know, your planning and everything that you did, is it, once you got the product finished, do you think it was a well worthwhile educational experience for you?
Yes, sir, I would do it again in a heartbeat. If we didn't already have a 16-foot trailer, I would probably tackle one of those. I have used this thing absolutely as often as I think I could get a use out of it between work and school. I take lawnmowers to my grandmothers, I take four-wheelers back and forth to my house with my friends to work on them. And then we haul a gator back and forth and a welding trailer back and forth. And I've used this thing so often and it has already been worth its weight in gold.
So you do a lot of public speaking?
No, sir.
Okay, that's interesting. Because I had an opportunity of watching all five of the top fives. And you wouldn't know that y'all didn't do any public speaking, because y'all, you're really, really good. I mean, you're smooth and you're relaxed and you communicate well. So yeah, I just, I'm pretty impressed with y'all. That's good stuff. And you guys might, on the other top, I guess, three of the other five, tell us kinda what your topic was.
Go ahead, Marty. Uh, my topic was based around how music can affect a person's mind beneficially, whether it is expanding a person's view on cultures of the world, being able to control a person's emotion and being able to influence a person's mind intellectually as well. And then that was my research, and it tied all into me restoring one of the sousaphones that Mr. John East had purchased while he was the band director here. I knew Mr. John East, I didn't know him personally, but I knew he had a major impact on a lot of people, not just within the school, but also within the community. And I knew he inspired so many people. And me playing the tuba myself, seeing that instrument hanging on the bandroom walls for so long, it made me feel upset for the instrument. And so, I took it upon myself with my mentor, Mr. Good, to restore that bit of Willow Springs history and try and bring it back to its former glory.
Um, I made a educational short film for the first responders around the area in the case of a school shooting, Adam Webb was a part of that. Uh, my research was about the benefits of film and how it can be used as an educational tool within the school and how it should be used in almost every single classroom. And so, by researching that, I just kind of like moved my passion from movies and film into an actual tool that the first responders can use as a visual aid to help in preparation for the event.
Uh, for my research, I looked into the benefits that students receive from playing sports, physical education, such. And then for my project, I broadcasted a middle school football, basketball, and a high school girls' basketball game.
And I think Taylor Reese was kinda spiritual, devotional, and she actually published a book.
She published a devotional, I think it was, how many days? Do you guys remember?
Uh, fifty, I think like...
Uh, I thought it was a hundred.
There was a hundred, there was fifty different people, and then she did one based on every question that she had.
It's like a hundred days devotional for, targeted to young girls for self-esteem and just, and it definitely had a spiritual aspect to it as well.
And you could actually, you could actually purchase that book.
Yeah, yes.
It's like eight bucks.
Still can.
Where at, how?
Uh, you'd have to get in contact with her, or Mrs. Wilson, or just call the high school.
I know that the cost of the book completely evens out to what it took to make the book and what it takes to ship, so she gets, it's just a complete...
Non-profit.
Yeah, nonprofit.
So, and then overall, I mean, what was interesting to me is like, how much money did y'all spend on your project?
Zeros.
Zero.
My most expensive thing was buying paint, spray paint down at Wagner's, but that just cost like 20 bucks.
They probably would have donated it to you.
Yeah.
And then Ben probably has quite a bit more, but you also have something to show for it too.
Yes, sir.
Because you can't buy a trailer for that, that cheap at all.
No, sir.
Because that's the cost of consumerism. So, and then I think Taylor, actually, I think Taylor basically...
She wrote even, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I thought it was interesting, and Dr. Spence told all the juniors when he presented them that, you know, it doesn't have to cost a lot of money. You know, you can do it and do a good job and still, you know, protect the pocket. I put this information together, I gave a copy to Dr. Spence and shared it with each of the board members. I just wanted to go through and just see where most of the projects were falling. And when I did that, I mean, I, I had 9.5 and 2.5, because I split bins in half. Because I figure, I figure half of yours was arching crafts and half of yours was school security. So, I kinda broke it in half. But nine and a half were arching crafts, nine were education and learning, nine were that topic should be firearms, hunting, fishing, and survivalism, survivalist. Nine of those. Six, music, five, personal health, five, sports, and it kinda goes on down from there. So I thought it was kind of interesting, I just tried to fit it into a category, so I thought that might get the board an indication where most of the students' interests are falling. So, so you can just have that for your own.
Very good, thank you all for coming in tonight.
Appreciate it.
You're more than welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but you're more than welcome to head home.
Ben's gotta get back to work.
All is good at Willow Springs Paper Depot.
Yeah.
The whole section there, pictures of all of them around now.
They did a good job.
Good fill-through.
That's interesting to note too, the price of these. You know, that's something that's been a complaining point for some in the past, and they don't have to cost that much.
That's correct.
It's all in what you choose to do and how you choose to pursue it.
That's right.
Very good. Moving on then, we've got an agenda in front of us, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes.
No changes. Consent agenda in front of you, are there any questions over consent agenda? I have more, if I can find it. One of them, big one.
On the chips.
Yes. Pretty small, insignificant, but then again, it's, to me, it's not. We got an April bank fee for 50 cents from Simmons Bank. What, why are they charging us?
Because we get that every month, because when I pay my state taxes, there's a fee.
Gotcha.
And it's like every month.
I'd never seen that before.
And it's like every month they charge me, there's no way I'll get that.
Yeah. Twelve million dollars to go back there a year and they gotta charge us a fee.
It's the same fee to pay all of them, so...
I don't know, I just...
That's my drive.
Right.
It's like they're not making anything on our twelve million dollars. So anyhow. Any other questions on the consent agenda items? Not, I would receive a motion to approve as presented.
So move.
Adam, my second. My colleague, any discussion? All of you are aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Very good. Administrative reports, Marty?
All right, well, I'm very proud of those guys, and that was five of the 78 that we had. All the senior projects were beneficial, everybody learned something, and I'm glad that most of you were there that night to watch those and see the value of our senior projects. Uh, the numbers on the report are pretty steady, so we'll be right to the of note items, and all of the items in the of note category happened pretty much within the last two weeks. So it's been an extremely busy two weeks in the high school. Prom was 15 days ago. Great fun, thanks to Mrs. Cochran and Miss Barry for planning that. Went to Big Cedar Lodge, incredible pizza, and had a full night. And some of us, I think, are still recovering from prom. Senior projects, again, you saw the top five. Every student created a capstone project for their educational career, and that's really the way we look at it, is that is the capstone project of your potentially 13 years here at Willow Springs, and you finish off that senior project. That's a proud moment for our students, and I regret that we didn't get to have that for last year's group, but it was very inspiring to see it back this year. Alpha Otah, that's the regional art show that our high school students participate in. Willow Springs was fourth out of nine schools at Alpha Otah. Lots of awards, lots of ribbons. And our sophomore, Mackenzie Smith, was second overall student out of those nine schools. So she's an extremely talented, talented artist. And Mrs. Schultz does a nice job with our art program. Band and choir, both had concerts on May 2nd, on a Sunday. Outstanding performances by both. Did a big thank you to Mr. Cochran and Mr. Haji for coordinating that. Maxed out live concerts again. Band concert was in the gym, and then the choir concert was at First Baptist Church this year, and the acoustics there were really, really good. And it really added a, kind of a extra level to our choir concert. The FFA had their banquet on Saturday. They had a lot of awards given out, their ag mechanics team, Ben Ivans was actually a part of that team, was sixth in the state, so that's quite the accomplishment of our ag mechanics team. Senior trip, went to Branson, did go-karts, zip line, landing, movies. We were all over Branson. For those of us that were still having trouble recovering from prom, that was another lengthy night, but kids had a really good time, and Mrs. Wilson planned that out and everything. Both, all of the end of the year, I just can't say how smooth all that's been. You know, usually you're gonna have some little thing pop up, but everything has been extremely smooth. Graduation, appreciate you guys attending, and from my vantage point, I think that went fairly smoothly. And again, a really well-attended event and a nice moment for our graduates. And then sports, we're kind of starting to wrap up our spring sports season. Track, they had their SCA meet, girls were second in the SCA, the boys were third. And they've got their district meet on Saturday at Owensville, so they're gonna travel away for their district meet. Baseball's playing better, they've been in some tight games. They've got districts coming up next week. Golf's having another great season, districts this week, and then state next week. And then tennis, had some of our tennis players here tonight. They were the SCA champs as a team. Ben Clarkson was the singles champ. Cody Ward and Thomas Chaney were the doubles champs. Justin Chaney and Martin Leia were doubles runner-up. And then Ben and Cody won district doubles, and will play a team from New Covenant in the state sectionals later this week. So, doing very well. And also as a team, they're the number one seed in their district tournament. They played their first round tonight, won that, so they'll play for the team championship in their district tomorrow. And that's here in Willow, as the number one seed, they get to host. And then coming up, we have transition day tomorrow, that'll be district-wide, so I'm sure the other two principals will say something about that as well. But that is a first-time endeavor for all of us. We're going to attempt to move all of the students up one grade for one day and then move them all back the next, so...
Oh, nobody said anything about moving anybody back.
Oh, they're going back, they're going back. Our teachers are nervous but excited about that, and we're just gonna embrace a little controlled chaos tomorrow and try to give everybody a taste of what their schedule's gonna be like next year. So, I think it's gonna be beneficial for everybody. Uh, our senior banquet will be Thursday. We started that two years ago, it took the place of the academic awards. We do more of a banquet now just for seniors and their parents. And we do the scholarships and all the major awards that come with being seniors, and we feed the parents. That's gonna be at the gym on Thursday, it was really great two years ago. So, we're gonna do that again, and then it will be time for summer school.
When is summer school?
June.
In June?
Yeah. Right after Memorial Day.
Any other questions for Marty?
Just one, on your ADA report.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at the total for average daily attendance down there, 36905.
Where you at?
On the total line of your high school ADA, 2019, 2020.
Okay.
36905.
Yep.
Yeah, it's down toward the bottom, right under total ADA, then you go to the very bottom, total ADA. You got 36905.
Okay.
So I'm just curious how you get to 369.
I don't have that report in front of me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the one that was included in summer school.
Would that include a summer school number?
No, I think we have, we've had this conversation before. And I, again, I think it's kids in, kids out, mobility, I think that's a lot to do with it. I know on the surface of it, it seems strange, because it's...
Thirty points higher than the other one?
Yeah, I know, I get it. But I know there's a formula, I know there's a formula in there.
Yeah.
Here, I'm sorry.
Well, I believe you, I think we have talked about it before.
I'm not picking on you, I'm just trying to understand. See, it shows 36905 for your totals, and I just don't see.
Yeah.
Now we get tired of the jump ups, I just don't have it.
Yeah, let me look into that. What happens on that, Dean?
I'm just curious.
Dean, what happens on that is the secretary takes care of all the ADA, they just port it on to command. So it is what it is. But I'd like to take a look at it, just what I'd like to do is put my cell on that, put my mouse on that cell, click it and see what the formula says. Because I think there's gotta be a reason why it's doing that, but I can find out. All right?
Well, you had that question one time.
We did, we had a conversation.
I, uh, I'm blank on what the answer was.
I don't remember.
I think Dean asked it, don't you remember the answer?
Probably did.
I think it was me. I think it was me. That question's been asked and answered several times. We will research it.
One day I'll remember.
We don't remember the answer either, so...
I remember we talked...
By golly, I'm gonna find out, I'll get it to you, so...
I just thought that was a number somewhere, because I couldn't find it.
Yeah.
I was feeling really stupid.
It's a good number.
I like it.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Marty? Thank you. Dan?
Okay, um, my numbers aren't significantly different unless you look at that 100% attendance number. We had a stomach bug go through in April and it impacted attendance. It was somewhere between a one and three-day bug for most of them, so our 100% attendance went to the double digits from being in the triple digits all year. But we did stay high on...
But it's not your 95% attendance.
Our over 95% attendance looks good, yeah.
Yeah, because all those...
They missed a day or two in there, but they came back quickly, so... We have a lot of field trips going on, this week is a busy week. Fifth grade took their field trip last week, all three other grades are going this week. We also have our social on Thursday night. And of course, tomorrow is transition day, as Dr. Spence mentioned, and we're very excited about that. That's, getting the new fourth graders over to our building is just, they're very excited. And our eighth graders, I think, are excited about going to the high school. They say they're nervous, but they're, I can see the excitement in them, so... Lots going on this week, busy week. We have map tested, we spent two weeks map testing. Seventh grade went first, and I cannot even tell you what a difference having enough computers for that whole building to test at once has made. We could test, we could have tested all four grades at once. What we did was, we started with seventh grade, and they were kind of our guinea pigs. We did have a little weak spot in our wifi that we got, Andrew, the silly, got worked out very quickly, that we didn't find when we did our wifi stress test. And the second week, we tested three grades all at once, and it was just as smooth as could be. It is a lot of work. We're the only building that every single grade level takes at least two tests, and two of the grades take three tests, so we get 10 map tests in our building. And that's a lot. Mrs. Henry just goes like a whirlwind that whole time, because she's the one who takes care of all of the testing. Making sure everything, everybody has what they need. But it went, it went well. We're looking forward to getting those results back, and the students really worked hard, seemed to take it very seriously, and was just really proud of them. Let's see, I-ready. I included the I-ready reports from our building, and I gave you a year-long view of that. We're reading in math. And I'll just go through them rather briefly, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, or if you have follow-up questions, you can email me or give me a call, and I'm always happy to go into more detail. That top page is a, it's a five-level breakdown of the building. And of course, we want that top part, that green part, to get longer throughout the year, and we want that red part to get shorter throughout the year. And it did, basically. I'm not unhappy with the progress that we made at the top end. I am unhappy with the progress we're not making at the bottom end, because to end a year with 29% of our students reading two or more grade levels below their grade level, I don't look at that as a success. So we are continuing to have that conversation and work on that and say, what can we do? Our RTI teachers are working hard on that, and what can we do to try to get those in the red zone? That's the, those are the hardest students, it seems like, to move up. It's fairly easy to move somebody in the yellow zone, who's only one year behind, up into that green zone. But when you're dealing with a student who's in seventh grade and who's maybe reading at a second or a third grade level, that's pretty tough. And they make progress, but even if they make progress, they're still a lot of times two or more grade levels behind, so they're still down there in the red. I broke that down by grade level for you. And every grade level made some pretty good progress as far as growing their green line and shrinking their red line. Eighth grade had a little bit of a setback on that last test. We did end the year in reading though, with 62% of our eighth graders reading at or above grade level. So we're very happy with that. I don't know, we don't have a good explanation as to why that red line grew though. So we're kind of, we're looking at that, and our yellow line shrank too. So that means more students were reading behind by that third test. Math, we made some good progress, if you look at that, that top report, we really shrank that red zone, and we were, we were happy with that. And our green zone grew considerably. And then I broke that one down by grade level for you too. And particularly, our sixth graders made some really huge progress. They doubled the number of students, or the percent of students, I'm gonna say number, but percent of students who were at or above grade level by the end of their year. Seventh grade did the same, fifth grade, they all made really good... Seventh grade did the same, fifth grade, they all made really good progress. So, but we are still working on that bottom end, we're looking at different ways we can shrink that red further. We are adding some math elective classes next year that are designed to try to just make math a little bit more fun and build on some math skills, basic math skills with some fun activities that maybe they're not feeling like they're painfully learning math. It's a lot of computer-based things, we're going to try a couple of different computer-based programs. We have three classes, every class to eighth grade has an elective math class next year that will be part of their electives, and we're hoping to make some progress there. And we'll keep looking at our data to see if that's going to be beneficial or not. And then we have some trainings coming up this summer, I'm always happy to see my teachers willing to sacrifice those days in the summer to go to some professional development. We have one called conscious discipline that is, if you haven't done in your school district, it's a really expensive training, but we had the opportunity to send it for just a, send people for just a per-person fee, so we have, gosh, almost ten people, I think, going to that in July for a couple of days, and it's a discipline model and teaches, teaches teachers how to not let students push their buttons and to help students who are, why are they trying to push your buttons? So, it's a, it's an interesting model. And then we have the Go CSD Innovation Summit the first week of August, and we have a lot of teachers district-wide going to that, I was really happy to see how many signed up for that. And that's a big conference where we get to see a lot of national speakers and it costs us twenty bucks a person to go, so it's, it's always really good. Questions?
No question, just a comment, I like the look to this iReady report, it's something that us dummies can read really easily, see what kind of progress you're making, other than just a, than just a, here's where we are, this lets us know where we are and where we've been. Appreciate that.
Well, you know, trying to be transparent, I'm not, you know, we're trying different things to make some progress. Like I said, I'm not happy with that red bar, I'd like to see that red bar disappear completely, but we're working toward that.
I think these are easier to read than the, than the pyramid, right?
Yeah, definitely.
I think they're a lot better to read.
It's just, it's a, yeah, different type of
Just a different report, I get it.
Do you think any of the shutdown and everything, is this, is this a factor from that last year, or is this pretty standard through? I mean, is this, is this something you see every year where you're battling this, like kind of feeling like behind or whatever, or are we behind because of the shutdown and the way school's been last year?
Well, I won't say that our reports look significantly different this year than they do, than they did last year.
You don't think that?
I don't think that they do, we always, you know, we're always fighting that bottom end. I did, at the beginning of the year, I ran our first iReady, our first two iReady reports against last year's iReady reports because we only had two last year, and our reading scores were not significantly different from our first report, looked a lot like our first report last year. Our math scores were, I feel like if we're going to be fighting ground we lost, it's going to be in math more than reading, so we're just going to continue to fight that battle though and try new things. I wish there were an answer out there where somebody said, oh, well, we did this and it works and it works every time, but, you know, I ask questions and I listen when we go to conferences and I'm not hearing any one thing that is really making huge progress for anybody, it's, we're all just trying to figure out how we can get better at it.
I'm just kinda, with the SR3 money that's coming up and the amount that has to be spent on bridging that gap, if we're not seeing significant gaps between, you know, where does that money, they should focus on?
Well, it still has to be utilized for learning loss, so.
Right.
For us, it's like seven hundred thousand dollars, I've had some preliminary conversations with the administrators about what that looks like. You can, you can put that into staff, you can put that in there, you can add more certified teachers, and you can do class size reduction. The problem with doing that is that when those dollars go away, you still have to sustain those positions, so you don't really wanna add more people you don't have to. I think it's gonna be probably, probably more in programs, we could look at starting after-school programs possibly, more tutoring for kids after-school, I think would be a good thing. Correcting, purchasing correcting materials, I think, I just had the SR2 budget approved today, and you'll be seeing, we've already purchased the five through six English English charge curriculum, we're adding seventh and eighth grade to that, as well as a five through eight social studies series that will be purchased with SR2 money. And so, anytime that you can do that, you have an assessment piece set, that you can justify that, it's helping to resolve learning loss. But, we're still kinda talking about what we can do, I mean, seven hundred thousand dollars to spend in a year and a half on learning loss is a pretty big detract.
Oh, no, eighth grade math, is it pre-algebra, algebra, what do the eighth graders take?
Eighth graders take either regular eighth grade math or Algebra I. And that does not break out on iReady, they all take the same iReady test. What we will see, the difference in that, will be the, our eighth graders take either just the eighth grade math, math test, or the Algebra I EOC, so when we get those scores back, we'll see how those break down, which will probably be August.
Any other questions? Thank you. Bobby?
Yeah, upcoming events, Dr. Spence mentioned summer school, just a little update, it's June first through June twenty-fourth. I'm not sure how widely known it is, but Chris Rogers will be the summer school director this summer for K four, Dr. Spence here will be five eight. K through four, as of today, we had about two hundred enrollments, typically that's up around two fifty to two seventy. We will get several this week during our kindergarten screening, which will bump that up, and I assume it'll be pretty close to a typical enrollment for summer school, but it's all planned and ready to go. I concur with Dr. Spence, the last few weeks have just run smoothly, to have skipped a year of the fourth quarter and end-of-the-year stuff, it seems like it's just like riding a bike, not on wood, I hope it doesn't blow up tomorrow. But, some of the things we're celebrating is map testing, we tested for three days and it really went flawless, and that's a credit to Erin Brower, our building testing coordinator, and she had good support from Chris Wagner and of course, the tech guys, Andrew and Vasili, and then the teachers implementing everything, just did a fantastic job. We celebrated our teachers last week with all kinds of goodies and food, and I've never heard anyone say, well, they just appreciated me too much, you know? And so, really, anytime we can do something to show how much we appreciate our teachers, you know, we should be doing it. Today, kindergarten graduation, probably not quite the event that high school was Friday night, but it was very well-attended and felt good to have stakeholders, parents, grandparents in our building live and in person, and it went very, very well. We promoted over one hundred kindergarteners, just a little over one hundred this morning, and it went pretty smoothly, I think. And I have some iReady data included in your report, it's not the same report as Dr. Spence's, but the pyramid is a building comparison, so every student in elementary that took the iReady, I did the first and third diagnostic tests with that, and then I compared the second and third in both math and reading, and we had significant gains in each of those areas. Obviously, there's still work to be done. Personally, my goal is eighty percent, and that may be a little too far, unrealistic, but as a principal, as a teacher, when I was in my classroom, eighty percent seemed like a good target to be on grade level, and we continue to work to improve that. I also, and a couple of you who have students in my building, probably received a parent report, I put a couple of examples of that in there as well, just so you would know what parents get. We sent it home after the last diagnostic test this year, and it just compares each of the three tests that the student takes and how they've grown throughout the year. And over to the right, it will, in each of the domains, it tells if they're on grade level, approaching grade level, or needs improvement, so. And if you like the other report, I will give it to Dr. Spencer.
For a small fee, I can do that.
I didn't see any button on there for reports for dummies, so.
That's what we need.
But, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Bobby?
Do the teachers or somebody provide help to parents to understand how to read those reports?
You know, we did not this year, we did last year, how do I get the year straight, but at parent-teacher conferences, we did provide that.
Now, you know, if you understand educational gardening and stuff, they're not too bad, but, you know, somebody just
I think that report, it says for families and it's supposed to be kinda self-explanatory, maybe put it in their terminology, yeah.
I can see
I know the percentile and, you know, national percentile, all that, it's probably something that could use an explanation.
Put things in perspective, yeah.
Anything else? Thanks, Bobby. Marlena?
I don't have a lot this month, just picking up for the finale of the year to report to you on numbers. I know there were some questions asked at the last board meeting and board meeting before about the percentage of students we've placed off an initial referral for special ed, we're still in process, I have thirteen that we're wrapping up this week evaluations, so next board meeting, I'd like to give you a little data on how many initial referrals and how many of those were placed and where we are numbers-wise. Things we have been working on, I've been working with Dylan and Officer Moore on some mental health side of things to put in place for next school year. And then, a change for next year for us, I think that due to COVID and I think Desi sometimes just likes to change things to keep us on our toes, but they are going to be requiring a lot more data on the special ed side of things, on progress monitoring, so that'll be a training for our special ed staff next year. Anybody that's worked with IEPs or students know that there's a progress report that parents receive monthly that reports how the student is doing on their IEP goals. Typically, that's marked as making progress, not making progress, or goal not addressed, so they want us to be a little more picky on the data that's going to be put in those reports that are sent to parents as well, they actually want something other than clicking the button, I guess I should say, so we're going to be looking at some training on collecting data, using that data to measure student progress, what's attainable, what's not attainable. I know a lot of times what special ed teachers, in the past, what they've done on IEP goal writing is look at a goal and say that a student's baseline one year was a forty percent and the next year you were hoping to achieve the goal at a seventy-five or eighty percent, and then the next year, instead of maybe looking at a different skill gap, they just upped the percentage that they want the student to increase, and I think after compliance has been looking at that, they're saying if a student can increase thirty-five percent in one year, then the next year, a student should be able to increase thirty-five percent and not just the ten or fifteen percent, that's kind of been a habit of teachers doing, so we're gonna be looking at some things to change that and making things a little more measurable and data collection on the IEP side of things for next year for us, so.
Any questions? I'm assuming you've probably got a few openings for paraprofessionals in your department?
I do, I need six, if you know, six for the finals. Most of ours that have resigned have taken jobs closer to where they live, just because parent pay isn't fabulous, so I know we've lost some to their hometowns, I'm also needing a seventh grade special ed teacher, so.
All right, thank you.
Just real quick, just to remind the board that we have our staff appreciation day on Friday, it's this Friday, May fourteenth, Adam's volunteered, he's gonna pull out the grill and grill some burgers and Max is gonna help too, and, but I think, I think it'd be great if everybody come out and we'll start serving at ten-thirty and folks will be encouraged to come out and get a burger, and I think we actually, I think there's a rumor about some cornhole boards maybe being set up and, and it promises to be a fun time, but it's, it's an opportunity to come out and, and just thank the staff and let them know that you appreciate everything that they do and everything that they've done, it's been a difficult year and, and I think it's a good way to let them know that you care about what they're doing, I think it's important to you, so.
That's how many emails been sent out to all the staff?
It's already been sent out about a week or so, so, and I'll probably send out another reminder on Thursday, just to let them know, so.
Okay.
All right.
He didn't mean just show up at ten-thirty, when we start serving.
That's what I heard.
I wanted to make sure that
Yeah, he might wanna come a little bit earlier than that.
Somebody at the end of the table down there understands that
You would think the retirees would show up early, they're just working for it.
Who there, whatever time you guys request my presence, you just let me know.
I think Adam said something like nine o'clock or something.
No, seven, what was it?
Seven thirty?
Seven o'clock.
Polar spot force, you know, his little gesture right there.
All right, very good. We'll move on, you got a proposed cellphone policy for the middle school?
Yes, and I shared that with the board, I think Dr. Spencer wants to speak to that to see if he can
Test that back down to me, I had to borrow her copy, I'm a little losing it. So, I just wanted to get some input on this, this is kind of a big change, and generally when we get input on big changes, it comes to you before it comes to me. I get very few complaints or phone calls on building policies, most of what we deal with is unhappiness that my students is, has consequences, we're violating a building policy, but our policies, we, we look at them every year, we look at what's working, what's not working, do we even need a policy for that, and if it's, if it's something that isn't an issue, then, then why would we? We look to try to stay in alignment with the high school, we go through their policy book every year and we try to keep our discipline in alignment with theirs, same categories, maybe take it down a little bit of a notch because our students are still learning and don't have a lot of life experiences yet, so we're trying to teach them in a safe environment that it's okay to make a mistake once in a while, but, but some, some of those mistakes can have consequences to them. We also try to keep our policies workplace-oriented, and cellphone policies are one of the things that, if you're a business owner, a lot of businesses are dealing with, I worked in private business for about seven years before I came here, and that was one of the main things that you dealt with, with employees, was wasted time and workplace accidents that can happen whenever they have their face in their cellphone all day. So, what we want to try to teach in our building is responsible cellphones, and right now, we're, we're not getting there. We're not actually looking at changing the policy, our policy right now reads that when you get on school grounds in the morning, your cellphone needs to go away, hopefully in your bag, and you don't really even need one, but it goes in your bag and we don't see it, we don't hear it, you don't use it during the school day. We're not trying to do that to, you know, be like a prison or anything, it's just that we have students in our building who are in a very different developmental stage than the ones at the high school, and many of them are carrying cellphones for the first time, and they don't have those experiences to know how to, to use them and use them, and think about the consequences of some of the things that they're doing with them. They also think, and I heard one tell me today, oh, I'm a multitasker, because he was doing something and I said, oh, I need you to stop doing that and listen to me, I'm a multitasker. Well, multitasking is a myth, I see several cellphones out on the table, and if that cellphone goes off, lights up, you're going to look at that, and if you read that text, you're going to stop listening to what I'm saying, because your brain cannot focus on two things at once, and no, it has not evolved since the invention of cellphones. Brain research tells us, and that's why we're not allowed to text and drive, how many of you have ever been going down the road, guilty right here, think, I'll just glance at that, oop, I'll just give a close, a quick answer, and then the next thing you know, oops, I'm almost in the ditch, and, and you had a little bit of a scare there. And that's why we don't text and drive, is because your brain cannot fully focus on two things at once. And our problem is, and it's not a small problem, it's, because I wouldn't be even looking at this if it were three or four kids, it's a systemic problem of students coming into the building and they're very worried about their cellphones and about the things that are happening on their cellphones during the day. You know, like I said, we have students in a very different developmental stage, I have ten-year-old fifth graders coming into my building and we're exiting fourteen-year-old eighth graders that are going off to the high school, so, very, they look very different from one grade to the next. We did a little bit of a poll to see who had, how many people we were dealing with in each grade. So, of our fifth graders, fifty-five percent of our ten and eleven-year-old fifth graders carry cellphones. So of our fifth graders, 55% of our 10 and 11-year-old fifth graders carry cell phones to school pretty much every day. 54% of our sixth graders, so about the same, a little bit lower. Seventh grade goes up to 69% and 84% of our eighth graders, so more than eight out of every 10 eighth graders, carry cell phones to school on a daily basis. In our building, we have a building total of 66%, so two out of every three of our students come to school almost every day with a cell phone. And here's what we're doing. I have a 10-year-old. He's coming over to the fifth grade next year. We're all very excited about that. But here's what we do. I, as a parent, I hand my 10-year-old a cell phone. And I say, "Okay, now that's expensive and they do cost several hundred dollars. Don't lose it and don't break it." So I can walk down the halls of my school and I can say, "Where's your math book?" "I don't know." "Where's your social studies assignment?" "No idea." "Where's your pencil?" "I don't know." "Where's your cell phone?" They can all tell you that. Because that's one problem we don't have. We don't lose cell phones. People don't steal them because they know you can track them and they always know where that cell phone is because usually it's in their pocket or some of them tuck it down right in front of their pants or in their hoodie pocket. But most of the time, they're wearing it on them somewhere. It causes a variety of issues. We, and I've listed some of those. And we've looked at different ways to deal with this. I'm a member of the SCA Middle School Principals Group and we email each other all the time about, "Okay, so this is an issue we're having in our building. Can you send me your policies on this? What's your discipline code for this? How are you dealing with this?" And the two issues that have come up the most in the two years I've been doing this are cell phones. What are you doing about them? And all the problems that come with them. And vaping. Right now, those are the two big issues. And in March, I went to the state secondary principals' meeting and there was a middle school roundtable and all of the middle school principals from around the state came and we just discussed topics. Two main topics of discussion. What are you doing about cell phones? What are you doing about vaping? Those are the two issues that we're dealing with in this age group right now. One person had an answer for that. She's the Assistant Principal of the Year for the state of Missouri and they had tried this in their school and it was something that they immediately had some good consequences or some good, yeah, consequences from. So it's not just, students don't just sit in class and whip out their cell phone and start talking to someone. That's not the issue we're having, although I've caught some talking to just to different people. But a lot of, they know we don't have cameras in the bathrooms. We can see them anywhere they are in our building, pretty much. Classrooms, the teachers are monitoring, hallways. But we have a lot of unnecessary trips to the bathroom and it's a lot in our seventh and eighth grade. I would say that probably well over half of our seventh and eighth grade restroom traffic is for cell phone use. Girls and boys, but more so noticeable in the girls, probably. It's that four minutes they have between classes, they slip in there, they send a quick text and then they get to class and then somebody texts them back. My cell phone just buzzed. So I want to know who it is and then I may need to answer that. So can I use the restroom? And I have so much hall traffic just from that bathroom back and forth. And we don't tell them they can't use the bathroom. We may tell them, "You need to wait a minute" or, "No, you've already been twice this hour. Can't you hold it till the bell?" But for the most part, if they say they need to use the restroom, we let them go. And for the most part, when they're in the restroom, I think we're having more cell phone issues in there than we probably even know about. Other issues that come up, we have a lot of, a couple of weeks ago, I had a parent show up at my door. We'd had a problem between, a student had had a problem with a teacher and before that student or that teacher could report that problem to anybody in the building, I had parents standing at my door telling me about the problem that it just happened less than 30 minutes before. Instead of telling us there is a problem, Mrs. Cottongim and I are the two people who can fix problems. If you're having a problem with another student, if you're having a problem with a teacher, if, whatever the problem is, we can probably help with that, but we need to hear about it from the student. And that is one of the things that we're trying to teach them is advocate for yourself. When you have a problem, when I have a problem, my mom doesn't call Mr. Hall and tell him that. As we grow into adulthood, we need to learn to take care of our own problems and that's one of the things that we are trying to teach our students. We have some trouble with, a little bit of trouble with cheating. We've caught students in the classroom trying to look up test answers on their phones. A lot of times, you can get halfway through a test, you would never do that, would you?
Nope.
No, didn't think so. You can get halfway through a test...
Never would have.
No, and say, "Need to use the restroom. Go to the restroom. Google an answer or two that you don't know." And then you go back and, gosh, you've just done better on your test. We have that problem. And these are not hypotheticals. These are things that we actually deal with. On the worst end of it, I'm 12 years old and I have this cell phone. It takes pictures. It puts me in connection with anybody in the whole world and my mom is not here to monitor that when I'm at school. I can, again, go in the bathroom, close the stall door and nobody really knows what it is I'm doing on this phone in there. We've had to deal with Officer Moore on some of our students, inappropriate relationships over social media with much older people. I think it's funny, if I'm 12 years old maybe, to snap a picture in the locker room. I send that picture to a friend. I just distributed child pornography in the eyes of the law and they don't care how old I am. We've had to deal with that. Bathrooms, I have a lot of TikTok videos made in my seventh and eighth grade bathrooms, I hear. I've not seen any of them. I don't know how to TikTok, but I'm sure the students could teach me. But just, and it's daily. It's not, like I said, this is not an isolated incident. I wouldn't even be worrying about it if it were. Just a lot of distraction because when you hand a student this, for some of them, it's their first experience with a cell phone. And what we're trying to teach them is to be responsible with it. We've let our eighth graders start having them on Fridays at lunch, but we have rules that go with that and that's our whole building. We try to give them rules that, we don't want sheep, we don't want blind followers, but we want reasonable rules that you would find in any reasonable place. So don't take pictures of people without their permission. Don't post them on social media without their permission. Don't make rude remarks on social media if you do post the picture. Don't sit at a table and talk on the phone when you're in a social circle. Those kinds of things are the rules we have. Just trying to teach them some cell phone etiquette and get them ready for high school. The number one question the eighth graders asked as I was talking to them about transition day was, "Are they going to let us use our cell phone?" That was the first question out of their mouth. It is such a preoccupation. And it's not just them. I mean, we all have a little bit. But it is something that we deal with regularly and we are looking for answers to that. So this lady, who I sat in the roundtable with, had implemented a new policy in their building. And again, we're not looking at changing the policy. We're not going to change the fact that we're not going to let them have their cell phones throughout the day to the extent that we can monitor that. But they had gotten lock-in cases and they make them just for this specific purpose because a lot of workplaces have this rule too. If you go to Jasper, I've been to Jasper and toured the building, you're not allowed to have your cell phone at your workstation. It has to stay in your locker. And there's a reason for that and it has to do with safety and it has to do with they're paying you to work, not to be on your cell phone. So again, just teaching them some workplace skills that they're going to have to deal with for the rest of their life. But they make a box. It has a little shelf. They come in like 12 compartments or 16 compartments and they're not very big and they have a lock on them. And the students put their cell phones in there. They each have their own little shelf with their name on it. They stay there all day. The teacher locks it and at the end of the day, they get unlocked. And we would be looking at doing that during advisory, removing our advisory to the end of the day next year. So it'll be the last 20 minutes of the day. All students will be in an advisory class at the end of the day in the building. So before they go to class in the mornings, they would run by their advisory room. They would put their cell phone in that box. The teacher locks it and it gets unlocked at the end of the day, maybe five till three and then they can, if they need to check a text message or whatever, then they could do that at that time. They started implementing this in this building. She said she had no, no parent that was unhappy with this. And we get a lot of parents who, once you've had to come to school three or four times and your son or daughter is in ISS for three or four days by that point, over getting their cell phone taken away from them. We have parents who request, we want them to turn it in at the office every morning. And we have some who do that. They bring it by, they give it to Miss Stacy. She gives it back to them at the end of the day. But we can't do that with 300 cell phones. So we're just looking for solutions. There, she said their trips to the bathroom immediately dropped, as did their tardies. Because a lot of the problem is they go in there, they're using the restroom in between classes. We have four minutes. You do not have time to send a text message, stand there and wait for that text message to be returned and then get to class on time. So we deal with a lot of tardies. We also deal with some insubordination. You know, "I saw you with your cell phone out. Hand it over." Nope, not handing it over. So at that point, it escalates and that becomes a little more serious offense. Just lots of tangential issues that go with the cell phones. I guess, you know, we have, our students have access to phones. They can come in our office. Yes, we do make them tell us why they want to use the phone. Because what's an emergency to a sixth grader? Maybe something that we can solve. Today, it may have been, "I forgot my field trip money." That's not an emergency that I need to call your mom at work, disturb her, have her call the school back thinking that something's wrong and have her leave work to come do that. That's something I can say, "Oh, you don't need to call her. Bring it tomorrow. It'll be okay." Same way with a lot of things we deal with. We have the capacity at school to take care of the problem. Sometimes it is an emergency. "I have a game tonight and I forgot my uniform." Absolutely. Call your mom. Sometimes we just have upset kids. I had a lot of fifth and sixth graders with separation anxiety at the beginning of the year after being home for that long with mom and dad. And they just needed to talk to their mom. And they would come in my office and they'd cry for a minute and I'd say, "Let's call mom" and they would talk to her for a minute and feel better. So we don't keep them from using the phones and we do have access to the phones. And we also need some of those phone calls to come through our office. We have to know what bus that kid got on after school, if they changed buses, or who picked them up sometimes. And we spend a lot of time after school sometimes looking for kids anyway. Somebody shows up to pick somebody up and somebody else got a crosswire or a message wrong and, you know, mom said, "Ride this bus" and dad thought he was supposed to pick them up. So we kind of need that communication to come through our office a lot of times. So anyway, we're looking for a solution. I would, this is a solution I would like to explore and I wanted your input. Several of you have kids in my building. What's your thought as parents and as the board members that the community is going to come to and whenever, you know, they generally have an issue, they hit you up before they hit me up, so. What are some concerns that you have?
So we have the policy. It's already in place. Don't have cell phones out, don't use them. That's there. So we're looking for, whether to get these lock boxes or not.
So here's my concern, because I have, like I said, I have one coming into the building too. I want my son, as he goes through our building, to learn the responsibility of, if you're in a place that has reasonable rules, that there is a reason for having them. It's interfering with our instruction. If you are not in class for 10 minutes of your math class because you're hanging out in the bathroom on your phone, you've just missed a good chunk of your instruction. I want my child to know that we have these rules for a reason and I need to respect the rule. But what we're embedding in these little developing brains right now is, here's a rule. I'm going to do everything I can to figure out a way to sneak and get around it without getting caught. And that's what we're teaching them right now. It's not a respectful rules. It's a way to get around it. And this one is probably the one that we have the most trouble with, I would say. Like I said, the other one is the vaping, but I think that's not as widespread because I don't have 66% of my building vaping right now.
I'm agreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah. I guess we're just taking away some, we're taking away that choice and I don't want to take away all of their choices. Some of the coolest things in my building happen because they start getting choices. Come over tomorrow during fifth grade lunch and see those fourth graders coming over to the fifth grade. First time in their lives, they have a whole cafeteria and they get to sit by anybody they want. And there's not a teacher sitting right there with them. And it is, it's the funniest thing to watch them. It's almost like they can't decide where to sit because they don't want to, they don't want to mess this up the first time. And, you know, we want to give them those choices, but some of those choices, they just aren't developmentally ready to handle yet, you know? If I'm 10 years old, I don't have experience with the cell phone yet and I maybe don't need to have access to it all day long.
So is this for all four grades?
It would be because we don't really differentiate policy for all four grades. Yeah.
I mean, because that's what I'm understanding. So we're not really planning on teaching them skills on how to manage their time. We're just going to take it away from them. Let Marty deal with them in the ninth grade, right?
And a little bit, yes.
Okay.
And I said...
Just want to make sure I understand.
I said honestly, let me give you an example of the difference between the high school. I came from the high school, of course, and one of the first things that I was asked by one of my teachers when I went to the building was, "Can we chew gum in the building? Can we try to let the kids chew gum?" And I looked at the handbook and there'd been a rule for years that nobody in middle school could be caught with gum and there were consequences for that. And I said, "Well, I don't see why not. I let my kids chew gum in my class and they, they were responsible with it."
Settle weapons from Miss Paxton.
So I said, "Sure. Let's have, let's do away with that rule and let's make that not a rule anymore." And by December, I had gum all over my playground, on my sidewalks, going up my stairs, stuck to my floors. The bottoms of chairs and tables were just solid with it. One of my teachers said, "I reached under to move the table and I stuck my hand in warm gum. That's not a good feeling." They were, it was literally, it was stuck to the walls, the little facing between the door and the walls. It was everywhere in my building and they had been worn several times. Come on, guys. Let's throw it in the trash can when we're done with it. And for whatever reason, and it wasn't just one grade, for whatever reason, there's something about that developmental age that says, "I think I'll stick my gum here instead of throwing it in the trash can."
Okay. So let me ask you, I'm sorry, phone up. Upon entering the building, students report to the classroom which they have advisory. So I just want to see the mechanics of this. That's their first class of the day and their last class of the day?
It's only their last class of the day, but we usually, they usually have 10 to 15 minutes in the building before that first bell. They can use the restroom. It will be on the same floor.
What time's first bell?
Eight o'clock.
What time do we open the building?
No, I'm sorry. 7:55.
What time do we open the building?
Building is open at 7:30 for breakfast. I keep them on the playground. Before this year, I kept them out there till quarter till.
The whole building's open at 7:30?
The Grimes is open at 7:30.
That's not where this classroom's going to be?
No.
So what time is the building open to?
The building opens whenever I blow the whistle for them to go in.
Which is?
This year, we changed it to 7:50 because they can't congregate in the hall.
So they have, from 7:50 to 7:55, which is first bill, first bell?
Eight is tardy bell.
So they have 10 minutes.
So they have 10 minutes before the tardy bell.
They're not late until eight o'clock.
10 minutes and they have to get to their advisory locker, their phone, and then get back to their class?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and most of the...
Got to get to their locker and get their stuff put away and get their stuff for the first hour.
It's on the same floor.
And most of them will be on the same floor. Good point. My eighth grade, my eighth graders go up to the eighth grade floor. They put their stuff in their locker. 10 minutes is more than enough time. Our building's not that big. And we're not that spread out. Everything for each grade level is mostly on that one floor, so.
Okay. And so, and you talk in here, if kids know they're going to leave early, how many kids leave early that you don't know about during a typical day?
I don't know because we don't usually ask them when they get, we don't ever ask them when they get there in the morning. Do you know if you're checking out? So I don't, I don't have any answer for that.
I mean, would you guess? I mean...
I can't even guess because some days we have a lot of kids check out early and some days we hardly any check out early. Thursday, we will have almost none check out early because it's the social and if you check out early, you don't qualify to go to social.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand at how many times a day these classrooms are going to be interrupted by somebody who has to have their phone before they go home because they're checking out early.
Right.
And they didn't tell you or didn't know in the morning.
We'll try to minimize that and that could be a case where, you know, Stacy can tell me or Mrs. Cottongim and we can just run up and grab that kid's phone because the lock boxes, you know, we'll have keys to and there's more than one.
Well, yeah, but there's a classroom going on in there, right?
There is, there is. And hopefully that will get better as we all get more used to the rule and, you know, hopefully it won't, it will be minimal. I don't think it will be as great as the number of students who are right now missing instructional time because of cell phone distractions.
All right. So when Marty put cell phone use in the high school, I believe I said you were crazy, right? Do you remember that, when you first said cell phone use in the high school?
Yeah, yeah.
I think I can do it and say you're crazy.
Oh, you probably did.
How's that working?
It's fine.
Yeah. Again, different developmental...
Totally different group of kids.
We still have, we have cell phone issues, no doubt.
Totally different group of kids. But a lot of the things that you're saying are going on, while I don't doubt that they're going on, you're assuming they're going on. Because you really don't know what's going on in the bathroom. You don't know if those pictures are being taken in there. You don't know that that's where they're, that that's what they're doing in there.
I know a lot of it, but we don't, a lot of it, we don't end up with consequences for at school because I have parent reports, saw this, you know, this kid has done this, sent it to my kid, things like that. But if it's not an issue at school, we don't consequence it at school if we didn't catch them in the act.
Okay. And the same thing with cheating. I don't doubt that the cheating goes on.
We catch, a lot of them, we catch you.
Cheating always goes on and I'm sure that that, I'm sure that voice go on in one way or another.
And I, we did look at also, we looked at two other options. One of them, I kind of took a poll of schools who upped their consequences and there was one of them also at the roundtable and they had just increased their consequences and make them really stiff for if you got caught using your cell phone in school. There was a really stiff penalty and they said it really didn't make that much of a difference. It didn't decrease incidences that much. And we kind of know that from research, you know. It's the whole carrot and stick thing. It's not, it's not an effective way to manage issues. And I don't ever want to look at things in my building as, what are we going to do to them when we catch them doing this? My first conversation is going to be, how do we try to be proactive and keep them from making that poor choice in the first place? And I am open to other options. I don't want you to think that I think this is the be all and end all. This is the best that I've seen as far as somebody actually doing something that had a positive outcome. We also, I talked to some schools that do let their middle schoolers use in between classes. We also, I talked to some schools that do let their middle schoolers use them between classes. I actually have a teacher in my building who came from a middle school that let them use them between classes, and she said, you would not believe how much better it is in our building. And I went, better? But she said, because of just the issues that we fear, if, you know, we let them use them between classes, they shoot that text out, and then all of the sudden, they have to leave class because somebody answered them. So, you know, I don't think that letting them have more freedom, if I thought letting them have that extra freedom to use it would get it out of their system, then I absolutely would be for that because I think it kind of works at the high school, but they have longer between classes. And their students have had cell phones for longer than ours, and they know that I don't really have to answer that right now. But when you're 10 years old and you just got that phone, man, that's a cool thing to have. And a lot of times, it's the parents who are calling and texting. And it's, so they're kind of complicit. And I had a parent call last week and said, well, I sent my kid a text, but he hasn't called me back yet, so I'm telling you that I need you to ride this different bus. Okay, well, call us in the first place, you know? Because we need to know what bus they're going to be on anyway when they leave.
You know, one of the things, Dr. Spencer and the, and the board, is that as we kind of move up through grade levels, the way our, our systems have always been designed is that you get more freedom as you go higher. And typically, it's worked. I mean, it's worked. High school kids, not always, but high school kids tend to know when they, about making more mature decisions. If, if the rule is, don't, don't use it during, during classes, just do it between classes, they're pretty good about. I'm not saying that never happened. But when you give a middle school kid at a different maturity level that same option, then they will more times than not abuse it, all right? Just because of the, the grade level the kids were talking about. And so, it's not unusual to, to say, okay, we're going to solve the problem. We don't have this issue if we just make sure we just take it out of our hands. You know, they're going to have, they want to deal with it, and, and that way, we're not going to be disrupted. There are some things that you point out, Dean, okay, what happens if you got to go in and get it? Well, I think we got to work through that and figure that out.
And what happens if they don't turn them in?
Yeah, that's the other one.
The consequence, or, we did increase that consequence. So, if you don't turn your cellphone in, and we catch you with it during the day, then the first offense, the first offense up to this point has been a warning. You know, we generally call the parents, but you can pick it up in the office at the end of the day. We're going to up the second offense to being first offense consequences. A parent has to come pick it up. And it's a, a day of ISS for a first offense. And the reason for that is, we're going to, we're going to let them know, we're going to give them every opportunity to do that. And it may come with some privileges. During advisory, every once in a while, we say, okay, how about let's do some controlled cellphone use? And here are the rules to that, and you let them have it for 10 or 15 minutes at the end of the day, to start trying to teach them some of those skills that, that we want them to have by the time they just get turned loose with them.
And how many cell phones do you think would be? I mean, you said there are 266 kids roughly that have them? So, there's going to be a few thousand or dollars' worth of cell phones in a $40 case with no camera on it? Because there's no cameras in the, in the room?
Well, again-
I mean, are the teachers comfortable with that?
They are, and I polled my teachers. I sent them a survey. I have 30, 32 certified staff, and 15 of them responded. And I didn't have any negative responses. There were no concerns about that. And generally, that's the other thing about the kids in our age bracket. I can put something behind my desk and say, and, and you stay out from behind my desk, and, and if it's locked, they're, they're monitored closely enough. You know, my, our teachers don't just leave them alone in the classroom for 30 minutes at a time or anything. But the students will respect that, and we don't have a lot of problem with that because who doesn't know that almost every cellphone, you've got it tracked, and I can trace it, you know, using another phone? We don't have a-
We're not going to go through lockers, we're not going to go through duffel bags, we're not going to-
No, we're not going to search students, but if I can obviously see that you've got a cellphone hanging out of your back pocket, then that's a problem. Or if it goes off during class, or if I walk into the bathroom and you're standing there texting.
So, the parents are going to argue that, well, my student may have had his phone, but it was turned off, and it was in his back pocket, and he never had it out, and you're punishing him?
Well, it's, it's a-
Right?
But he wasn't-
That's what would happen.
And, and if we add this to the policy, that is what would happen because it would be policy. It's just like, if they have it, if they whip it out during the middle of class right now and start talking about it.
But then they're actively doing something. I'm talking about a student who's not actively doing anything except walking down the hallway with a set of their phones.
If you're not doing anything with them in the office.
But if the rule changes to put it in the lock box, then they need to put it in the lock box.
I, I don't disagree with you. I'm just, just trying to look at how this thing plays out in the community.
I get that, and I've thought about those things too. I have, I have come into my building-
What about, and I don't mean to ask about an impossibility here. So, what about the possibility of breaking it at the, between sixth and seventh grade? Have you thought about?
Have thought about that.
One rule for fifth and sixth, another rule for seventh and eighth?
I have thought about that. We don't have as many issues with the fifth and sixth graders because, again, they're just more compliant. Our fifth graders are basically like elementary kids. They like us, and, and they will do what we ask them to do a lot. We hardly ever have disciplinary-
Some of the seventh and eighth graders, they don't like it.
It is, truly, it's primarily a seventh and eighth grade problem. I will not lie about that. We do have some issues in the sixth grade once in a while. But yeah, no, agreed, that's, that could be another possibility.
Okay, one question I have, Dr. Spencer, is what, what about kids who are, who are playing sports, and they may need to leave school early? Say they have to leave at 2 o'clock.
Okay, so maybe in that case, we remind them in the morning, hey, you have to leave early for a baseball game. All of the baseball players need to check their phones in at the office lockbox. And that way, when they leave, they can scrub, we can grab them on the way out. So, and not something I had thought about, thank you.
Okay, so you guys have asked most of the questions. I, I've still got a few questions concerned. What about, okay, so, these teachers are going to be, these phones are just going to be rushing in, and sticking these in these lock boxes. Who's looking them over for damage before they go in there?
Well, they shouldn't need to really be looked over because you're putting them in there, and nobody's touching them after you put them in there. That door gets locked.
I understand, I understand that in theory, but what happens when little Johnny pulls it out and say, hey, my screen's broke? It wasn't broke this morning. Who can verify that it wasn't? And then mom, mom or dad's going to be up there and say, hey, my kid's phone was broken, you're in your lockbox. You know, somebody, somebody, the wrong person grabbed it, dropped it, did, hey, Johnny, here's, oh, that's not mine, that's, and, you know? Because this is going to happen really quick if-
Yep, and I guess one-
I see that as a problem. The other problem I see is that now we're responsible for $100, $150,000 worth of phones every day.
Right, and I, I can see both of those issues. I guess as a classroom teacher, I would, I would have my lockbox labeled by shelf, and I would hand that phone to that kid myself. I wouldn't let them just walk up there and walk phones.
Are all your teachers that responsible?
Um, I'm not going to say all of them, but I would say, if I tell them, don't let the kids do that, and you do that, 98% of them would be.
Right, what, what, I'm sorry. But I mean, if Suzie comes in at 7:45, as soon as you blow the whistle, and puts her phone in there, and Billy comes in at 7:55, because Billy's been playing ball, Billy takes Suzie's phone, and, I mean, that's the kind of thing that happens, right?
They have to get in the building when I put, get them in the building.
Just saying, there's a, there's a, at least a 10 or 15 minute window there that different kids are going to be accessing the same box.
All things that we will have to, to kind of work the, the kinks out of.
How common is it for kids to be tardy in the morning, late into school? Five, 10, 15, 20 minutes late?
A lot.
Okay, what do you do then?
And they would put them in the office lockbox, and then they would come back there to get them after the 3 o'clock bell, not, not interrupting advisory time, so. Penalty of being late, I guess.
Right now, is it, is it still policy? If, if I have something I need to bring to my kid during the middle of the day, what do I, what's the process right now?
Right now, we're still going with our, our opening plan, and you ring the buzzer, and either somebody comes down and gets it. If it's not something, you can send, or we have a basket down there, and if you believe it, the basket, if it's paperwork, we generally have somebody that-
This is pretty much due to COVID, correct?
It is, but it's, it's also something that, in talking to officers more, that it's also good safety procedure not to just let people in the building assuming it's a parent. You know, they have to kind of, they have to tell you what they're out there for.
So, we're going to have roughly 25 or 30 phones in each lockbox, is that-
No, our advisory classes, every teacher in the building has an advisory class, and we try to keep them under 15.
Okay. I don't know that I'd want my phone locked up with 15 other people, those kids' phones, right in here in close contact, and then tonight, I'm going to take it and stick it here in my mouth.
Right, and, and, you know, and-
Do you?
Well, they, they each have a separate shelf. I personally wouldn't have a problem with it. But here's my view as a parent with a student who's going to be in my building this year, and I know it's easy to say, but you're there with him every day. But even if I weren't, I would be okay sending my child to school every day without a phone because there's a phone in the office. If I need to call and get him a message, that's what Stacy is for. She takes message conscientiously, and she gives them to those students. I would be okay never sending my student to school with a phone, even if I worked somewhere else, I would.
I don't disagree with you on anything what you've said, that there's a problem here, but I, I just really don't feel this is the answer. That's just my personal, my personal thoughts. Matt, you got anything I've not heard from you?
Yeah, I, I fully support you and all of your teachers with the cellphone deal. It's a major concern with me and my daughter. We fight the screen time continually, and it's something that I think every parent should be concerned of. I don't think they should just hand that thing over and just, you know? They're just, they're too young for that. I have, I don't, I have issues with the locking, the taking ownership of the phones and taking them away. For me, I'm not comfortable with that. Looking at the school, the teachers taking that ownership, having those phones, I think there's too many issues with it. Obviously, it's been done somewhere else successfully. But me personally, I, I support you, but I, I can't get there with it.
Okay, so here's what, my question to you is-
Can I say something, okay?
No, sir. There'll be, there'll be a spot for Thomas from guests later in the meeting.
And here's my question to you then. If this isn't something that you can get behind, as a board, you know that we have a problem that is interfering with instruction in our building, I am open to suggestions. So, if you can think of something that is a better solution that you could get behind as a parent and a board, then I would love to hear that. Because truly, right now in our building, we have a problem that is interfering with the quality and the amount of time we're spent, or a lot of our kids are spending in, in instruction. So, I am open for suggestions, truly I am. I'm just looking for a solution.
Right, I understand that, and we're not the only school. I, I would, I would just, I'd wager the farm that 100% of those middle schools in the, in the nation are having the same issues. And my problem is, we've got one school that you said that you know of that has tried this. I'm wondering what other schools are doing? If we've explored that, looked into that, seen what some other people are doing, other than just one school that has tried this, and that's what we're going to wonder on.
And I will, I keep my ears open for that when I go to conferences. I have a lot of friends who are administrators. I've been doing this since 1992, so I know a lot of people out there. And the SCA, Middle School Principals Group, this is a constant discussion. We, we have sent around, okay, so what's, what's your policy? What's your consequence policy? But again, I don't like to approach it from, what are we going to do to them, when? Our policy is in alignment with most of theirs. Most of them have a, a warning, and then it goes to parent pick up and ISS and, and on from there. And I always look at those schools because they're close to us, they have the same cultural area. You know, we're, we have the most in common with them. So, they're all floating this question too, and also, you know, is there a solution for? How do you get them to just put them away and leave them away? Because it is, it's interfering with our instruction, and again, it's-
When that happens, Dr. Spencer, and, and the first part of the policy is you call the parent, and they confiscate the phone, they come to get the phone?
Our first, our first step right now is simply a warning, and the student does get written up for a discipline referral, so it goes in the computer that they have that warning. The parent gets a letter for that when we do those. I think we do them weekly. And the student can pick up the phone in the office at the end of the day.
And that's the 43 documented?
That's that part of it. That doesn't include the kid that the teacher said, hand me your cellphone, I'll turn it to the office.
So, there's 43 letters been sent out?
Is that kid likely to turn his cellphone in anyways? It's going to be the kids that are compliant. I mean, that non-compliant kid, he's not going to walk in in the first of the morning and be like, ah, here's my cellphone, you know? He's not willing to give it to you when you're asking for it.
Maybe not, maybe not. Like I said, that's, this is, this is a solution that has worked for another school, and I was, I'm looking for a solution. So, I am open to whatever solutions that we can come. I also, I don't want to put my teachers in, in a bad position because, I, I mean, I, I know of other schools that, and even in the high school, Because, I mean, I know of other schools that, and even in the high school, some of the teachers will have just like little pocket things, and you can put your phone there at the beginning of the hour, and then you get it back at the end of the hour. I don't feel like, in my building, that's a secure way to do things, just because, again, the age of the student and the difference in.
Not even when they walk into the classroom, put it in the folder, did it?
I think it's more likely that I would walk out with somebody else's phone, or that somebody else would grab a phone and drop it. In that scenario, then.
That's even more shuffle.
I think so, I think so. If we did that every hour, I think it would be even more.
I think between those options, rather have it in a secure box, that way it kind of works out. But now, the second time, at what point do you take it away and parents have to come pick it up?
The second time they get caught with it, that's a day of ISS, and the parents have to come pick it up.
And most certainly, when the parents come and pick it up, obviously, the kids will never come back with it again. Because their parents are so upset about them not following the rules that they don't get that cellphone back.
I wish.
Is that not right?
No, generally, we have a lot of repeat offenders with that. We have, we have students who are up to their third, fourth, fifth day in ISS because of.
So instead of putting them in ISS, why don't we just say, after two ISS offenses, you don't get to bring your phone back? Why don't we punish the kids that are violating the rules?
Because they're all, a lot of them, it's not, we're not talking about five kids here, we're talking about several.
But they learn pretty quick, wouldn't they? And it would serve the same purpose, you solve your problem.
But I'm not sure you're gonna keep them from bringing their cell, not bringing their cellphone back.
I'm not sure you're gonna be able to get them to turn it into a little box.
But you know, also, when you say you can't bring it, that's when you get into that issue of, okay, now I need to search your bag, turn your pockets inside out, because, you know.
But that's if they're caught, though.
That's if they're, if they're caught, yeah.
I'm not saying, look, their bag, you know, but if you hit the second or third suspension, then.
A lot of them get.
Or ISS, then why do you?
Then you gotta search them when they walk in the building.
Okay, so I don't want to.
I have not seen, and I understand completely what you're dealing with. It began before I retired, and.
They had cell phones back then?
Sure, they wanted the back phones, the big back phones, you know.
My, wherever I read this, I, my first concern was how much, how complicated was it gonna get for teachers, and you know?
And that's my concern too.
Yeah, it was, I know. And I'm sure, you know, you've talked to teachers about, you know, this, and that the trade-off is, okay, I spend some time dealing with the phone at the end of the day and at the beginning of the day, or I have to deal with phones all day long. And, you know, so it's kind of a trade-off. You know, we're either gonna have the disruption to the educational process, and it is a pain. And it, I, and your point about, you know, the kid's mind is gonna be on that phone. And if it vibrates, you know, their mind is not gonna be, you know, what's going on.
My watch just twitched, and I lost you there for a minute, because I just got a cellphone message.
Yeah, and, you know, and the same way with all of us. So you're trading that disruption for the possible problems that we've all heard about, you know? That we don't know are gonna happen, but they could happen, you know, a broken cellphone, you know, kids not turning their phone in, or whatever. So those are the things you deal with. If you have this, you figure it out. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But.
I do not want to, I don't wanna make an investment. The boxes themselves, a decent box with a lock on it's in the $40 range. And I don't wanna make that investment for every teacher in the building, for it to be a one-year thing, and then find out then that at the end of the year, you guys have had so many complaints, and it's not anything that you can support again. It is, it's just one more thing that the teachers are required to monitor, that we weren't, we didn't deal with this 15 years ago.
Right.
It's one more thing that we deal with in the classrooms, on top of all the things that we've always dealt with. We're trying to teach math and science and social studies and English, and, and it's just one more thing that you have to feel, you feel like you are constantly on trying to figure out why that kid isn't paying attention. And again, a lot of them have these now, and if they're in the same room as their cellphone, because most of theirs aren't the expensive cell, cell-capable kind, they're the ones that are hooked to their phone, then, you know, if they're in the same room, they're sitting right there by, then they can just look at their watch and do the same thing.
Right, so how are you gonna manage that?
Well, it would probably only work if they were in their room, in their advisory room during the time, because it has to, you know, you have to be within so many feet. But it doesn't sound like the majority of you can get behind this, and I don't want to do something that when parents come to you, because they, again, they don't come to me, because these are reasonable policies. Don't send your kid to school with a cellphone, or tell them, keep that cellphone put away. But they're reasonable policies, but if, when parents come to you with them, they don't always sound reasonable with that consequence, or with that particular kid. I know that. So if you can't get behind it, when you have it brought to you, then I don't wanna do something that, you know, is not something that you can support. But again, I like solutions, so if you can think of any, or if you hear of any, and I will continue to work on this on my end also, and look for schools that are doing things that work, because what we're doing right now is not working.
Have you talked to many of the schools? Is anybody allowing them to use some phones at different times? Are there many schools that do that? Because that was the first thought that crossed my mind. Instead of telling them, we're telling them, no, not at all, and then we're having problems with them, I, you know? I just wonder, if we allow them to use them some, would that alleviate the times that they're not, would that help? I know it's not gonna eliminate it.
I don't think it is. You know, we let, like I said, it's just a little bit. We let our eighth graders use them one day a week during lunch, just a little.
Yeah, but I'm talking about every day. Use them at lunchtime, or use them, you know, I don't know what the schedule would allow for, you know.
Well, I don't have any class time to give up for it.
Sure.
At lunchtime, we have 20 minutes for lunch, and I'd really just assume they eat and get that done, and get their trays put up. It does make them really quiet. My eighth graders are really quiet on Fridays. But again, it's.
I'm not sure I would be in favor of giving them a set aside structured time just to use their cell phones.
Yeah, I don't know that that's what we want to devote our school day to.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. But Marty, what do you, what do you do as far as cell phones? When are they allowed to use in your building?
Before, before and after school and passing times. Lunch. Basically, any non-instructional.
Sure. Now, that's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not saying a lot of times for them, I'm just saying.
I can see problems that would arise with that also. I am not in favor of letting them have them every day at lunch, especially our younger kids. Our eighth graders could probably handle it, some of our seventh graders. But seventh grade is a really hard year for discipline anyway, and they do a lot of things that they don't think about consequences for. And the more access they have to things to make poor decisions, I think sometimes the more poor decisions we get at that age. Just because that year is such a huge developmental year for them. I don't really have any other unstructured times, recess, but then I would really worry about phone damage if they had them out at recess, and about the lack of ability to monitor them, because we have three people supervising recess, which is plenty if they're playing, but who knows what they're doing on their cell phones, you know, if, and that's not ours to monitor. It's not my place to monitor if your kid's watching inappropriate videos on his cellphone. And, you know, it's, it's, I just, it's a little hard for me to fathom sometimes what we're, what we're doing, and we just hand them this thing that accesses everything in the world to a 10-year-old, and say, here you go, go off to school. And I think about what my parents would have done if I had even asked to take something that cost $100 to school. Of course, I'm old, so.
Well, to Mac's point, and this is a, this is an issue that there's not, there's not a right answer to.
No.
I mean, I've been, I've seen schools that do more, more structured, more restrictive, and they work, and they don't work. I've seen schools just more lax, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't work. There's not the right answer, you know? But I do applaud the fact that you're trying to solve the problem.
We are trying.
And you're not ignoring it. That's extremely important.
And I'm not saying this is the be-all, end-all answer, and you need to agree to it. I truly, if you hear of things that are working, I have talked to schools that allow cell phones at the middle school level during passing times. Their teachers are not in favor of that. They say it causes more problems than it fixes. They're, they're just.
I would imagine a lot of the drama that happens, especially in middle school, and I'm sure some in high school, is directly related to cellphone communication.
So much of what we get, you know, we deal with calls regularly about this child is bullying my child on social media, and thank goodness, you know, the answer to that most of the time is, but it's happening after school, because then it's not ours to deal with. We do report it to Officer Moore and Dylan Carter. But if it's happening at school, because they've all got their cell phones out, then it's our problem to deal with, and that's another discipline issue. And that's a more serious discipline issue a lot of times, depending on the media they're using, and what they're doing with it, and how many people are accessing it. So it's just a matter of that developmental age in my building, and it's hard. It really is. We probably spend half of our time on instruction and half of our time on social emotional development, and Mac can probably tell you that too. That's never changed. They're just going through this big old change that kind of levels out about the age of 15, and then doesn't really completely get over with until about the age of 25, and it's all brain development. It's all brain development, so. Thank you for your time. I know I took up a lot. I do appreciate your input, and as parents, I welcome this conversation to continue, because a lot of you do have kids in my buildings.
So Dr. Spencer, based on the conversation, is it your position that you're not going to proceed forward with this?
I don't feel like I have the board's support to do that right now. Do you agree with that?
I would agree with that. And so then I would ask the board then, when we get down to action items, that we just don't take action on that particular item? Because I think she has consents of the board.
Could you do us a favor, and you're part of the SCA Middle School Principals, whatever, could you poll them and see what they're, what they're all doing with cellphone policy right now? If they allow, if they don't allow, and maybe send us an email out to the board, once you give it a minute.
I will do that, and also just Mr. Hall.
We're all agreeing with you. It's an issue.
I know that you agree that it's an issue, and I know that when you have kids in my building, that it's an issue you're dealing with at home too, you know, I'm.
I know our daughter is, well, I have her as an everything, and there's consequences at home.
Something I would ask you to do, I posted it on Facebook, and it's on the middle school Facebook page. There is a podcast, and it's 41 minutes long, but man, is it good. And it talks about what social media is, that it's not all bad. It's not a slam on social media, but it talks about some of the consequences that we're seeing. And it's particularly harsh on middle school girls, that there's about three years in there, that for middle school girls, social media is the things that they do to each other on it, and the things that people do to them is just so detrimental to them. And it's a really good podcast, and it's interesting. It's got a lot of good research behind it. So if you get a minute, listen to it.
If you are gonna send out that summary that Tony asked for, would you include the cellphone misuse consequence out of the Discipline Code? Is that section of it?
You bet, you bet.
So that I've got it in front of me.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Did anybody else get a text message while I was going on, that they wanted to check that they were kinda nervous?
I have my cellphone in the vehicle, and I have been paying so much attention to it.
To take your painting, how does it keep up with your phone?
Well, they could do that, because I promise you, I bet Kaylee knows where her phone is right now. That's right there, where it's probably been all day.
I have a couple of foot comments. First of all, I have a text message while you were talking, and I did not look at it. Because I knew that I'd lose track.
And I wish you'd answered it, I'm waiting.
But a couple of things that you said, that Mac touched on, is the drama that happens with the cellphone use. I also was starting to deal with that. It was the flip phones more than, at that time. Now, about their mind being on cell phones, also the basketball coach when that was on, and we had a rule, when they got on the bus, they put their cellphone in a duffel bag, and they did not have their cellphone before a basketball game, because the mind thing again, so.
And truly, brain research shows that, that you cannot do two things at once. I know you think you can, but you can't do both of them well.
So I sympathize with you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that you are understanding. I'm just looking for solutions.
Now, was that before or after Scott was on your team? We didn't have cell phones. I don't know, when he came in, he said something about running all kinds of lines for you or something, I don't know. No, we were too busy running.
All right. We're gonna talk about moving high school and middle school softball to a.
Well, not, no, middle school softball is already in the spring.
Okay.
High school softball, right now, high school softball is a fall sport. And Dr. Spencer obviously can speak to this as well, both the spiritual plus he also has a daughter who's playing. But I think part of this is the fact that we have, it's gonna get to the point where we're gonna be the only SCA school that's currently playing softball in the fall. And so you have a proposal before you that we, where we would, beginning next year, we would still play our fall schedule, but then we would have a modified spring schedule. The fall schedule, we already have contracts in place, so we want to be respectful of those and the teams that we have contracts with, and then we would pick up whatever games we could pick up in the spring. In the spring, probably pick up the SCA schools that were, were playing ball at that time. So for one year, the girls that are in softball would be playing basically two seasons of sport. They played in fall, and then play in spring. And then the following year, it would just be a spring sport. And now, some of the things that we're gonna have to take a look at, cost is not a huge issue. I mean, for one year, we're gonna have to have an additional coach. And then beyond that, we are going to have to look at upgrading our facilities. Because right now, we basically have one softball field and one baseball field for two baseball programs and a middle school softball program at the same time. Now, we're gonna have one softball field, one baseball field for two middle school softball, for a middle school softball and a high school softball program, and a middle school baseball program and a high school baseball program. Obviously, it's gonna be an issue. And so we're looking at, and I've already met with Mr. James and Josh Owens at the T-ball field, just, just adjacent to Mumford Gym, to see what we can do to put up fencing there that would go down the first baseline, and then, and the third baseline, kind of reconfigure the field so we're not hitting too many balls over on Caldwell's house. We're even looking at doing some type of netting to keep that from happening, to where we can make that, to begin with, a nice practice facility. At some point in time, I'd like to see is include bringing in portable bleachers, maybe a small scoreboard, that we could actually have games there. And I think it'd be good for the community as well, because that particular facility could be used during the summer also. And so I think we have that. I don't see that as a huge cost item, right now, having to upgrade that, and I think it's something that we need to do anyway. So with that, I don't know if the board has any questions about the rationale about moving it from fall to spring? Dr. Spencer, I didn't know if you had anything that you wanted to add to it, either as a administrator or a parent. Thoughts?
Well, I think it's a win-win, and I think especially this season would be beneficial to our, to all programs involved, with maybe the exception of track in the spring. But our softball program would benefit from it. And the fact that every SCA school is moving to spring, it makes sense that we're not out on an island. But Robert's, he's went ahead and made contracts with schools, so we could honor those in the fall, and then roll over to the spring and be ready to go in the spring.
You don't think it'd affect the track too much?
I'm sorry?
You don't think track would lose too many kids?
They would lose a couple. We talked with Coach Wagner, and, you know, there, we may work out an athlete sharing type of thing, where kids could compete in both if they chose.
I've been involved in districts that allow dual participation, and it can work. It just depends on the sports. I think softball and track would be a good partnership, because softball's a team sport and track's more of an individual sport, and so it kind of works. I've seen cross-country and football work, because again, an individual sport versus a team sport, I think there are some that don't lend themselves very well toward that. But I think in this case, I think this would be one where I think it would be fine, and I think Coach Wagner would be more than willing to share athletes. It just takes a young person who's very dedicated and committed and prioritizes well. I mean, that's a big deal, because they, they have to be able to manage their time. But it can be done. What about, and I don't think this would be an issue, but I just wanna make sure, I know there's something, I forget what the deal is, but if you offer a male sport, you've got to offer a female sport. Is with us offering that twice a year, will there be, there be any problems there? You know, because we're gonna offer it twice in one year.
Yeah, we're really not technically offering it twice, because we're only competing, like this coming year, we would compete in districts, and Misha would recognize this still as a fall sport. We would be doing exhibition games in the spring, SCA schools, and I mean, we would play for an SCA, but it would not be Misha.
Okay.
And they're okay with that. I mean, schools, a lot of schools are that.
And at that spring side, we would not be participating in postseason.
There'd be no championship season in the spring.
So the postseason would still occur in the fall, this first year.
Right, and then we would switch to spring and fall.
Okay.
Now, with the upgraded facility up there, would that be something that could be shared costs with the Y, since they use it in some type of local?
Possibly. I mean, I could approach Terry and see if there's any interest in doing that. I would guess that their resources are probably more limited than ours are, and the fact that it's on school property, I would have a problem trying to get Estes and see what we can do, do alone on it. But they, I mean, if they're interested in doing a cost share on it, that's fine. I just know that they don't have the resources at the school, as you're telling.
I didn't apparently do, but I didn't know programs being national wide or something to do with that.
Fine, and it's a little bit different than the cost share between the city and the school, because we both have fairly good budgets that we can do that with. But the Y, they don't have as much, and so I think it'd be difficult. I can approach Terry, but I wouldn't push the issue, because I still think it would be something that, it's on our property, and I think we could do something that would be good for our kids, but then I think it'd be good for the community as well. So I think that's a good thing.
Well, they use our facility for basketball too, anyway, don't they?
Yeah, well, the Y does, yes, they do.
What about, I haven't paid attention, but I know at Booster Field, back behind the softball field, is there room for another field in there? Is that, I know there's a pretty good-sized area, but I've never just really paid.
I don't know if it'd be big enough.
That'd be the track, walking track, and those morrow trees and.
Isn't that where, is that where the Mighty Mice practice and stuff? You tell, that's about where the Mighty Mice practice, isn't it? It's on the outfield, outside the field, try the softball field.
But, but there is, there's a line of trees that goes right through the center of that, of that open area that.
Oh, the morrow trees.
Correct.
Quick, so middle school softball, baseball, or whatever, that, that's here, that's happening, that's not anywhere. Is there much difference in cost between upgrading to a practice field versus upgrading it to something where they can, like you said, with portable bleachers and stuff? Is there, is there a tremendous difference in that? I mean, if we've got, if we're gonna do something, we just do it and have it available.
Dugouts would be one of the things, too.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be an additional. I mean, that's what you need mainly for games. I don't know. I mean, we haven't really put cost to it. I mean, fence, I mean, I just shot a number out the drop of the day, and I just told, just told the arbitrage that I, maybe 20,000. And he thought, well, that's kind of high. I don't think so. Once you start looking at the fence, we need a home run, or we need outfield fence, some type of netting. Dugouts, I think the dugouts down at Booster were built by parents, or it's a senior project or something, wasn't it?
They were built by parents, yeah.
You know, so I think there's some things that we can do there.
But plumbing is a big issue. That's not something.
There's water there.
If you're gonna put bathrooms in there.
There's water down there.
Yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't think them bad. I know what you're saying. I get it, I get it, but that's a pretty, when you start talking plumbing, that's gonna.
I wonder about your netting too, because right now, the first baseline is right at his garage. Right, I mean, right at it. So it's got a big turn.
No, we're turning it the other way.
I still think you're probably gonna have to put some kind of big netting or something up there. I don't know.
Yeah, when we went and looked at it, we were looking at taking the home plate and moving it more toward Mumford, and moving it as it's kind of, if you, straight deadaway center field would be Mumford, basically. And then you'd go first and, and, and third base line from there. Went to Mountain View's ballgame, and they have one of those nets going across, well, you were there, and that, behind the backstop, and they have them between the two light poles, because it goes much higher than the backstop does itself. Still, they keep a lot of balls from going out on the first base side and busting up windows and stuff, but beyond that.
A lot of cards.
Yeah, but I mean, but they do make the net, and there's a way to do it. We just, we need to figure it out, because we're gonna have to figure out how to keep those balls from going over there, or we're gonna be replacing windows and a roof every now and then, like once a year or something.
Well, and in turn, field team, might have looked quite directly into the sun too.
Correct. But I think either way, irrespective of moving softball, I think having another practice facility is necessary.
Yeah, you've got, you've got four teams wanting to play at the same time, practice. So I think, go ahead.
Will we vote, we can vote for practice, or we can just go for a whole field?
We're voting to move it to spring. I was just curious, you know, if there was a huge difference, or, I mean, if we're gonna do something, why not just?
I agree. No, I totally, I totally agree, and I think that we, I think we need to start making a practice facility, and I think we need to move it into something where people can actually use it competitively.
We're just flush with cash.
Because of Michigan, we're not gonna be flush with cash.
But I think it'd be.
Sounds COVID-related, I mean, spreading.
I, you know, there's always somebody to do it. But, but I do think that it would be good to have, I mean, we could, we could have middle school softball and middle school baseball games down there.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If that's here to stay, then.
Correct, yeah. So, and that's something that we can kind of look at down the road. If we decide, if the board decides to go ahead and agree to move it to the spring, then I'd like to start working on that, that practice facility this fall.
Right.
So we have something ready.
You know, that's all, if the practice facility's 5,000 and making it a game is 75,000, those are two drastic things we'd have to look at.
Do we have the resources and the time to get that done this summer with everything else we've got to do?
Well, as far as this summer, I'm looking at this fall. You know, I think hopefully by the time school starts, then I'll be free for making the skies and our grounds guys to maybe focus on this as well, and do this. So it's nothing I want to tackle during the summer, because there's too many other things going on right now to be able to do that, so.
I have a question for Marty. Marty, what's, is the push all because of volleyball, is that by our move into?
That's what Robert has told me, that the ADs have said that volleyball is, is driving it, that they want their athletes, their softball athletes be playing volleyball. And so you kick softball to spring, and that opens up.
Do you know how that's done statewide? Because usually, like, half and half.
He says it's evening out, and around here, it's tilting, tilting towards spring. I wish Misha would pick and just say, this is when we're doing softball, either spring or fall.
Right.
That's the only sport that the school can choose which one they, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me that schools choose that. But the choice is trending more towards spring now.
I just always thought the weather was much better in fall to play, rain out.
I like fall softball, yes, but what are you gonna do if the rest of the conference is moving?
Right, you know, the SCA school, I agree on the choice.
You got other questions? Last month, we had a request to allow virtual students, virtual and homeschool students participate in extracurricular and co-curricular activities. We told them we would take that under advisement, have a discussion about that. So tonight is our night that we can discuss that. Let Mr. Hall and probably Marty weigh in on that, with their, with what you all have come up with.
Sure, and, and I'll, I can say a few things, and I know Dr. Spencer, that may have some ideas as well. But, you know, our practice has always been that you have to be a full-time suited student to participate in extracurricular and co-curricular activities. And part of the reason for that is because there's an issue of equity when it comes to eligibility, academic eligibility, especially when you start talking sports. Because right now, all of our seated students are held to one specific standard, and we can control that standard, because they're all taking the same classes at the same school by the same teachers. When you have, when you have other students allowed to participate, then you have a difficult time controlling that academic eligibility. That's just one reason. So I think the other thing is that I know a lot of coaches would like to ensure that if it's a team sport, that they, they have all the kids around together during the day as part of the team, to build that team concept and that team unity. You don't necessarily have that if you have students who are participating, who aren't necessarily involved in, who aren't going to attending school during the day. And so I think it's hard to make that connection as well. It's always been, from my standpoint, and, and right now, it's a local decision. It's always been from my standpoint and 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 right now, it's a local decision. The state has not yet passed any type of legislation that would basically require schools to do this or not be part of Misha. So since that's been our last past practice and since that, since it is a local decision, I would, I would ask that my recommendation be that we stay and we continue with the current practice of you have to be a full-time seated student to participate in extracurricular and co-curricular activities. And that, that's my two cents worth. I don't know, Dr. Spence, I think you have.
I can agree with everything that Mr. Hall said. I feel if you want to participate, then you need to be a seated student.
Is, is it necessary to lump homeschool and virtual students together? Or could you separate them and allow one and not the other?
You could. I mean, I think with homeschool, it's even more difficult because there's.
I do too.
There's absolutely no control over any homeschool child whatsoever.
And with the virtual school though, I mean, as far as the academic side, I think that those standards are pretty high.
Except on the virtual side, we don't control the virtual instruction. All right? And and so that's actually the grade that's given by another teacher in another location. That's not part of our system. So you still have that.
But it is approved by the state.
The, yeah, through M O C A. The virtual is absolutely, absolutely is.
So, and they're the ones that approve ours, right? The state.
From our what?
Curriculum.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
And they have the same standard.
They approve the providers. Okay. And they approve the M O C A providers. All right? The other thing would be, but you still don't have the idea that the student being in school around the other kids to where you can build that team concept. If it's a sport, for instance. So you don't have that. So, but to answer your question, yeah, you could make a distinction between virtual and homeschool.
Sure. The co-curricular, it looks like it would be very sticky, very tricky to try to get those kids into involved because you're talking about, well, you're talking about F F A and and band.
Co-curricular would be any, yeah, exactly. Any class that's at all, both an activity and a class. So they get a grade for it.
Right. So I mean, those would be nearly, I say, those would be nearly impossible because those kids would have to be here. You know, to be in F F A, you're going to have to be in here and take one of our our ag classes. You know, they do stuff for F F A in there. And same with with band and choir. I don't know what all is involved in co-curricular. That's just ones that come to mind. But I could see where that would be a real problem.
I did you point on F F A. I'm not sure I understand how that would be the same for band. Because it's not, not the same kind of seated instruction, right?
Well, it is.
And they have to be there, right? Well, I mean, they would have to be there for that period of time.
They wouldn't be there.
Well, I mean, in order to participate in games, they have to be at the games too, right? And they have to be at the practices. So, I mean, they still have to be there.
But those are all after school activities.
But that doesn't matter to these kids because they're not doing anything else. I mean, they're, they're at home doing virtual instruction. So they're free to come from eleven thirty to.
So you're saying then they would, they would come and be a seated seated student at that time?
Come for band and they would come for, I don't, I don't see how they do F F A, but I can see how they could come for band and choir or.
I, I get your point. I get your point there. I was thinking more of they're not coming to our facilities for anything.
Right. But they would have to come to our facility if that piece of it.
Yeah.
And and I think Max got a good point. I mean, I think you can parse this out a little bit. I'm not there with homeschool students, but with virtual students, their educational is coming through our buildings, right? We're seeing those scores.
They're on our rolls.
They're on our rolls. And, and you know, they're in our district, their parents are paying taxes. And, you know, at the end of the day, the question is, is it good for kids? Right? So is it good for these kids that are at home and not interacting with other students? Is it good to bring them into our school and have them interact with other students? That doesn't sound like a bad thing to me.
I get the point about, you know, them not being at school and being with the rest of the kids that are on the same team and so on. And how that could create some, you know, I don't know, problem. You know, where, but I also see, I think what Dean's saying is that there could be, on the other side, a real good experience for for the people, the kids that are, that are not typically around the rest of the students, to be around those students at those activities. You know, I, I worry about separating groups more than we need to. And this is a, this is a way that we separate, you know, virtual students, homeschool students away from the students that come to our school. If there's a way to bring these people together, I don't, you know, seems like good could come out of that.
Right. And I think on the virtual side, I mean, I can understand that, but more so than homeschool.
Yeah.
However, that being said, if it is a virtual student and they're enrolled in a co-curricular type class, then they absolutely would need to be held to the same standards and expectations as every other student taking that class. And that means if they have an evening concert, they're expected to be there. Their grade is dependent upon that, right? And so I don't want that, well, I'm a virtual kid. I don't, I don't really need to come to.
Fundraising or anything.
Yeah, anything. Fundraising, anything.
Anything that's part of that activity, they're either in or out.
They got to be part of it. They can't pick and choose what part of the activity they they want to be part of. If they're in it, they're in it.
Right.
And then also, I think if they get a grade for it, then that grade goes toward their graduation. Because right now, virtual students still graduate from Willow Springs High School. And so they have to have so many credits. And so if you're in band or you're in choir and you're not going to the certain number of events that you have to and you get a poor grade and it impacts your G P A, that's just the way it is, right? Because there's no special exceptions because you're a virtual kid.
Sure. I agree. I agree.
So that's just the way it needs to be. So from that standpoint, I get on board with that because they are enrolled in our school district. It is different for homeschool kids.
I agree.
Yeah.
I absolutely agree with that.
I absolutely agree with that.
What about repercussions or, or like, you know, say a kid disbehaves or misbehaves during an activity or something like that? I mean, there's consequences when it comes back to the school. You have no, you have no.
That's a good question. That's a very good question. Because if it's a virtual kid and say they're in a co-curricular activity and say they, if it was a seated kid and say, heaven forbid, they were consuming alcohol at an event, right? What would typically happen to that kid when they came back to school?
They'd be suspended.
They'd be suspended. We can't suspend a virtual kid.
Why not?
Well, they'd be suspended.
Why can't you? You're suspended from that activity.
So then we will just remove them from the activity.
Well, he'd be suspended from that activity.
Because it needs to be an.
Perhaps number of times and that would affect his grade if there's a grade to be added.
The kid's suspended from school. Know what you said, Marty?
Yes.
So you don't suspend the virtual kid from school, right?
Well, you'd suspend it from the activity during that period of the suspension.
We, we jumped way over to suspension. What if it's I S S? What if it's detention? What if it's a, you know, what, what about these smaller repercussions for something? Hey, you're just acting like a jack wagon on the, you know, the field trip or whatever the deal is.
And we wouldn't have the ability.
Well, you couldn't I S S. You couldn't, you couldn't go to I S S.
Then they get, then they get no, then they get no, there's no repercussion for it.
But the participation in that activity would be the.
That's, that's right. You could trail. I mean, the whole thing is, is these kids want to participate in these things. They're coming voluntarily. And so if they misbehave, they don't get to. Problem solved.
Yeah.
So the only, the only issue then is back to, is the school thing, is if they would do something that would get them kicked out of school for two weeks. Virtual wise, what happens? That's, that's the difference. If they did something at an athletic event or they did something that they weren't supposed to.
Well, they'd be kicked out of the event for the two weeks, whatever, whatever portion of it.
They're also kicked out of school if they were caught drinking, right?
Well, the seated kid would be. A virtual kid would continue their instruction, their education.
I just don't see that as the other big issue.
But where's limitations? If a kid is being virtual, they can do their virtual from eight to two and more. So does that allow them to come to school all day long just to have fun? They can take seven, eight fun classes and, and come and go as they please all day long?
No, I don't think so.
I mean, is it going to be a limited deal? They just can come, pick one band or if they want to be banned in F F A?
I mean, do they get the same amount of electives as another, as a kid that's in seated school, the same deal? Do they get to choose?
That sounds kind of like fun to me, you know, just come to school.
They would get the right classes.
Come and go.
What, what is?
You don't get it more than that.
Marty, what, does the state have, you have to be enrolled at the school on so many credits? So they could, they could do their whole thing with Misha through virtually to be.
Yes.
To be eligible for Misha.
Yes.
I, I don't, I don't know what it looks like. I don't know what the answers are. It seems to me that the virtual students, and we see it gets here in virtual school. So we're on both sides of this coin already. I mean, we're on one side of it already, for example. And I'll tell you honest to peep guys, I don't think it makes any difference because I think one of these years in the next very few years will be told to do this. I mean, I don't think there's any question about it. I mean, if you watch the bill that just went through the Senate this week. I mean, this is going to happen. So let's get in it and figure it out. I mean, it's good for kids. That's, that's the bottom line is it's good for these kids.
So we kind of opened a bigger can of worms tonight than what we started with. Here's what I'm going to do with this. I'm going to table this till next month. I'm going to have Marty and Bill and whoever you guys want to get to and study on that. Try to put us a plan together, what it would look like if we decided to let the virtual, I think we're on agreements that homeschool kids, we don't, they don't belong.
So everyone feels comfortable leaving them out of it.
Yes. And work on, look at what a plan would look. What it would look like for virtual students back to participate in extracurricular and co-curricular activities. I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, but look at what a plan would look, give, give us some pros and cons to that plan.
And and we have time and we've got a few months to get there. And, and there are districts that have allowed it to. This isn't, this isn't new, you know? So we don't have to necessarily recreate the wheel on this deal.
I have a question on, on, just on that legislation that's in there. How, how does a private school or a charter school come into play along with virtual? I know we're talking about homeschool or whatever, but I mean, it's sitting on the governor's desk. He's either going to veto it or pass it. We're going to, there's, there's going to be vouchers. There's going to be private school money. There's going to be charter school money. I mean, do we need to, i- i- is that too soon to look at how that comes into play as well?
To me, I would not include charter schools or private schools. You may have to at some point in time. But to me, the biggest distinction here, and Dean, you hit on it, is virtual kids are enrolled in the Willow Springs School District, all right? A private school is not. A charter school is not. And and they basically, the way that the new legislation is set up, they basically can apply for a scholarship to a private school. And businesses to donate to this fund can get a tax credit that can then take, it'll, it'll cost the state fifty-seven million dollars or whatever. That can then be funded to help support kids going to a private school. So it's taking money out of the public coffers and putting it into private hands for kids who decide that they don't want to go to a public school anymore. So that's that deal. I still believe that this is different. Private schools and charter schools are not the same as virtual kids because they're not actually enrolled in our school.
I agree.
They're doing their own thing. Okay. So I can see the distinction with virtual kids, but not homeschool and not, not the private or charters. So. Anything else? We will work on doing something with that and I'll bring it back hopefully by next month. Okay?
All right, moving on. I know both of you had comments or questions earlier tonight for board policy. We don't allow that during the meeting. Now is the time that we allow comments from our guests. So whatever, whatever you've got.
Actually, the first thing, yeah, the first thing I was going to say is for you, have you ever thought about doing, I know it's a big hit, like Faraday cage in the bathroom? You know what I mean, the Faraday cage? Like it basically blocks cell phone signals?
Jammed signals, yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying.
Signal, signal jammers, we, we actually have looked into that.
Oh, okay.
Because sig- signal jammers are, it's pretty much the consensus that federal law makes them illegal.
Oh, there you go.
Because I actually had a teacher ask that at faculty meeting and I knew the answer to it because I had researched it. Because we had truly gotten to that point that we're that desperate.
Yeah, if it wasn't illegal, I would have suggested it.
I've looked at that before also and they almost, by, by federal.
But yes, we have considered that.
I don't know why you're from Lululemon Park here.
Did you have something else?
Yes. I just have a comment about, you know, the virtual student because my daughter, my daughters will be a virtual student. So regarding the classes they take, all of the classes are approved by Sharon Patton, the counselor, the high school. So my oldest, who's taking the classes, she is in honors world history, astronomy, Japanese, honors physical science, honors English and art appreciation and music and digital communications. Everything that is required by the school, by the credit hours. So all the classes she's taking is approved by your counselor. And another thing is, she does not play around. She gets up at eight o'clock in the morning. She works till ten at night. Because she has approximately in a week about forty-eight assignments that are due on top of everything else. So this is not what's going on. And also, we got, so if you're, when you're planning, it's all approved. And all of these courses that she's taking, they are master approved because when you go to launch his website, that's what it says. These are the courses, these are not. And she has aspirations. She's, her wishes was she is excelling economically. And her thing is that she wants to, she feels comfortable and she wants to show her strength as a leader. And, and as a team player and be an asset to the community. And she interacts with her, and she wants to interact with her peers in extracurricular activities. I visited with Dr. Lori Wilson, this virtual thing. It, it was something that is, was going to be progressing in, into our school systems, maybe like five years down the road. But due to COVID, it has accelerated and it was, here we are. So, and I think through, because of COVID, a lot of people are going to be, they're, the parents are deciding which way should we go? And kids excel and she is a great student and our, our second daughter, Madeline, will be enrolling and she's going to be a virtual student. Both of them are polar opposites. Alicia loves, she is task oriented leader. She'll get it done. Madeline is a social butterfly. So she's like, can I play softball? Can I play this? Can I do this? And I think both half girls will make Willow Springs a very cool, full thing. And like Marty last meeting when she was there, she's like, you said that, I would like to point out students who are excelling and leaders and I want to point it out, our girls would be in it with the top leadership in any role in any task that they do, they will excel. I mean, I'm not saying that as their parent. I'm saying that as also a homeschool mom that we never thought we would be doing homeschool, but we did. And it's great. And one of the questions, when you are putting your stuff together, is our kids have aspirations. I mean, your curriculum is divided into, are you going to school or college? They're in the trap for college. So my question comes up to the board is, is she going to be eligible for scholarships that you are giving out to your seniors? Because if she's virtual, is she just not going to be, all her hard work is just going to be put aside? You know, so those are the questions that the board needs to answer. Because she is going to be one of the Excel students. And, and, and also I do agree with you and I appreciate you saying that I think the biggest job in this room as parents, as workers and everything is, we cannot exclude kids. And as Ms. Penn says, this is a very difficult time. Kids are trying to figure out who they are. And if you're saying, oh, you're a homeschooler, you're whatever, we are, both my husband and I are in the healthcare field. A doctor doesn't say, you take holistic medicine, I'm not going to treat you. You know, you're here, you need help. Kids are the same thing. They're here to, for an education. We're to provide them with it. You can't say you're a homeschooler, whatever. We are a resource and they just come to us. And I hope that we'll, we'll be like that, that every kid would not be turned around just because the choices were made. You know, the, you know, you won't be like, oh, you're a vegan, go sit at that table. You eat steak. We just say, okay, that's what we do. We make it. Let's go. And that's what we need to do. We cannot separate the kids at this time. It is so crucial. Because that's one of the biggest things. She's like, Mom, I worked so hard. Why can't I do this? You know, the only thing is she's like, oh, well, and then we were told we need to go to Willow Springs. Oh, no, we have to go to West Plains in order to do extracurricular activities. Why would we do that when she's part of the school? She's enrolled in the school. The counselors decide her classes, you know? She's only, she's taking it virtually because that is what is best for our family and the situation. But she works really hard and I think, I understand there's, you know, there's no easy way. But they're excellent students though, and we should not be dismissing them.
Thank you. And we are working on it to see what, what options we can explore.
I appreciate that because that's our other question. What's going to happen when she comes to scholarships in senior year?
That's a good question.
Because when she's applying for colleges, they're looking for what her activities are. And she can't show that she's a leader because she did not have an opportunity. She's like, am I going to put, I mean, she's always thinks, you know, she's, this is, she's a freshman, but she's already thinking about it as senior year. When I'm applying for colleges, what should I say? My school board did not allow me to participate in activities, so therefore I don't have anything.
Sure.
So should she put that on there?
I don't have an answer for that. But we will.
No, that's okay. But it's, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have a comment to make and I don't know when, considering that if we, we have the residential facility on campus now that our students participate in, that we need to be thinking about what doors we're opening for Ozark Trail students as well. that our students participate in, that we need to be thinking about what doors we're opening for Ozark Trail students as well. They're all considered distance learners and, um, right now they have close to twenty students that are not on our campus for various numbers of reasons. What, what avenues, doors we're opening up if we do that for those students as well?
Okay. Very good. With that, I would, uh, oh yeah. Oh, infraction. We got scratch item A. And we're gonna move on to item B. We had a proposal to move girl softball from a fall to a spring sport. A motion would be in order to approve that, uh, plan. Callie, in a second. Was that Adam?
Adam.
That was good. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
An opposed? Sounds like we'll be playing softball and then. Uh, it's time to approve our membership with MSBA for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, Evax already approved the claim, but we'll go ahead and, let's do a motion to make it sound good.
Best money we ever spent.
Absolutely.
All in favor, no, sorry. I have the motion, yes.
By Dean, in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
An opposed? Very good.
Yeah, don't ever stop approving that. And most definitely don't ever stop approving the policy development.
Oh. You can't have the policy without this though.
I think, yeah, you gotta be a member, so. You can't just buy the policy and not be a member.
This is just their way of charging you extra for the policy. No, they are handy with other stuff. I've called them, I'm sure some of you have called them at times for, for items information. Just, just makes it easy. Um, we need, I, I didn't know we needed another work session.
Well, it's a budget work session.
Okay.
It's a budget work session. Yeah, I would, uh, request to the board that we set Thursday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand, two thousand twenty-one, five thirty p.m. For a budget work session to kind of talk about the FY twenty-two budget.
Okay. Anybody like to make that motion?
Nobody wants one.
Nobody wants to talk about the budget?
I'll make that.
Really?
I was just checking my calendar.
I didn't even think to check my calendar. Do I have a second?
Sounds like cricketing.
Was that you, Matt? Second by Matt. Any discussion?
How long will it last?
Are you gonna pin me down?
Depends on how many questions you ask, Dean.
No less than thirty minutes and no longer than three hours. And I promise to make it as exciting as, I, I promise to make it as exciting as a budget can be, so.
All right.
Don't forget the food, man.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
An opposed? That was a very un-energetic group of...
Five thirty.
Dean.
Five thirty.
What were you doing over here? She's on her phone.
I told her, make sure you bring food, cause that'll get them here.
All right. Anything else for open session tonight?
No, no raps.
No.
I received a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, wait.
What?
I removed.
Adam, in a second. Matt, is that my roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. Very good. We are in executive session. Thank you all for coming tonight. Do you need any administrators for, uh, the Dr. Spoons here?
Thanks for coming.